Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Colleen Brennan.
A flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God,
indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You're welcome to all to sit down. I don't feel like you need to stand for this. I just want to thank everybody here. I want to thank the council for allowing me this amazing opportunity to serve all of you. I want to thank the mayor for all the wonderful work she does. My term here was short-lived, but I feel confident that Don, who's here with us today, he's been shadowing me today. I'm confident that he will do an amazing job. And I'm grateful. I'm grateful for this opportunity. It's really been the opportunity of a lifetime, and I could have been happier to serve.
You've been great to serve with, Colleen. Thank you.
An affidavit. A publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution that is a community of tolerance and goodwill. We pledge to work together to foster greater understanding and recommend additional actions to fulfill our obligations to all citizens of Omaha.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. We welcome the mayor, Mayor Gene Stothert.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. This resolution affirms our pledge to support and implement actions that reflect our commitment to diversity and to protect all citizens from hateful acts. It condemns discrimination, hate speech, harassment, intimidation, and bias-motivated violence, and reinforces actions to achieve equity, opportunity, and advancement within city government and within our city. We have taken numerous steps to ensure that 2021 is a year of recovery and rebuilding. I hired Keith Station, our deputy chief of staff, for diversity, equity, and inclusion. I appointed the community and employee advisory boards to help recommend actions and develop a strategic plan to create and maintain a culture of inclusion in government and in Omaha. These employees and community members are already hard at work. Greater understanding and solutions will come from all of us. We are expanding diverse representation in hiring and on volunteer appointments to city boards and commissions. And all employees will benefit from additional training in diversity, equity, and inclusion. This training will carry over from the workplace to our homes, to our neighborhoods, and to other relationships that we have in our lives. And finally, the city of Omaha supports and has adopted the principles of the Greater Omaha Chamber CEOs for code: Commitment to opportunity, diversity, and equity to be a leader in equitable change in our city. This resolution was developed with assistance from the Anti-Defamation League, from Dr. Franklin Thompson, who is director of our Human Rights and Relations Department, from Keith Station, deputy chief of staff for diversity, equity, and inclusion, John Carl Denhovich, Chair of the mayor's LGBT advisory, and members of the mayor's Millennial Advisory Group. I want to thank them all for their support and help in developing this resolution. Omaha is a model for communities in so many ways, and let's be a model for this critically important area, too. Let's set an example that we are a community of unity rather than division, harmony rather than conflict, compromise, equity, understanding, and trust. We have a responsibility and an obligation to improve and do better, and I know we can. Thank you all for your support, and I ask for your support with this resolution.
Thank you, mayor. Are there any other proponents on item six?
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Gary Nochman. I'm the regional director for the Anti-Defamation League, Plain States Region. Thank you for the honor of allowing me to make a few remarks in support of this important resolution. I am proud to be among the citizens of Omaha, its leaders and advisors, who embrace this important message to the world. Part of the mission of the Anti-Defamation League is to secure justice and fair treatment to all. The commitment of the mayor and support of this civic body goes a long way to repair past wrongs by resolving to secure justice and fair treatment for all our neighbors and fellow citizens. An ally is someone who speaks out on behalf or takes actions that are supportive of someone who is targeted by bias or bullying. An act of allyship like this resolution draws a line in the sand for all to see. I call on all of us to live up to the aspirations of this measure and to hold ourselves and each other accountable to its commitment. I'd like to read a very short poem. "We mustn't let our children grow up with colored views, no matter the instigator, regardless of the news. To teach, we all are equal. We must control our fate. We must stand up as allies. There is no place for hate." On behalf of the Anti-Defamation League, the Jewish community of Omaha, as well as conveying support from Tom Warren, president of the Urban League of Nebraska, who unfortunately was unable to attend today, I respectfully request unanimous support of this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Come on down. Don't be shy.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Lorraine Chang, and I'm here very proud to support the mayor's anti-hate resolution as a representative of the newly formed Nebraska Asian American Leadership Alliance. Every Omahon wants a city to be a place where he or she is safe, respected, and welcomed. That is why it is important to declare that hate directed against any person or group on the basis of ethnicity, race, age, religion, disability, gender, or gender identity cannot be tolerated, not where we live, work, or play. Unfortunately, acts of violence, discrimination, and intimidation against Asian Americans have been escalating over the last 15 months, and not just in Texas or on the coasts, but right here in Omaha. Last February, a bomb was exploded outside the offices of the Nebraska Chinese Association. I know personally of incidents of people yelling racist slurs from their cars and leaving hateful notes to people of Asian descent. Sadly, much of this recent wave of anti-Asian hate incidents can be attributed to xenophobic messaging related to the COVID-19 pandemic. While it's definitely laudable to state that hate will not be tolerated, words are not enough. What actions can we take so that these words don't ring hollow? First of all, let's set the record straight. We must use facts to debunk the conspiracies, myths, and stereotypes. For example, it is simply not truthful to scapegoat Americans of Chinese or Asian descent for the actions or inactions of a foreign government. Second, let's recognize and celebrate the significant contributions that Americans of all ethnicities have made to our community and to our country. A recent survey found that 42% of Americans could not name a single well-known Asian American. As May has been designated Asian American and Pacific Islander Month, it is the perfect time to educate ourselves and our families. And third, when hate happens in any form, let's call it out and report it. If we see something, we can do something. We cannot be silent. By passing this resolution, the city of Omaha is declaring that it takes stopping hate seriously and that it will take necessary actions that promote civility, respect, and safety for all people. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Louis Humana, 3306 Burt Street. Hello, councilors. My comments are also reflective of the last year. I thank the mayor, Gene Stothert, for bringing this resolution forward, as well as the council for its consideration. When I read the resolution, I was encouraged that it denounces misinformation and disinformation because hate does require it to take hold. I'm an immigrant. My parents brought the family to California from Mexico when I was three, then to Nebraska when I was eight. I've experienced racist attitudes in small towns and the city. I've learned how to overcome embarrassment, which is to move to pity for the offending side. It is time that the city government takes an active role at confronting those that would give comfort to these hateful attitudes. The one thing that the mayor can do to take action to fulfill her obligation to all citizens of Omaha is to work closely or better with each council member. I believe they know they're part of the city better than the mayor does overall. I encourage Mayor Stothert to defer to the council when opinions prevail on economic and financial issues. Another thing I've noticed over time is that ageism is real. Ageism may be casual or systemic, and it has to stop. Racism is real, and it has to go. These hateful points of view are reprehensible and beneath civil society. They exist mostly outside of these persecuted groups, but also within. To my peers, I encourage you to be led by futurists and strategists, not by those suffering the trauma from this hate. Yes, it is ugly, but as far as organizing people, you'll want sober minds leading the cause. To the council, what the social unrest of the last year might teach you is that you have a larger role to play in our community. All kinds of people are asking as much. Listen to them, and may the mayor listen to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next proponent on item six.
Hi, my name is Sarah Johnson, 2316 North 52nd Street, and I'm here today to support you all voting yes on the mayor's resolution. Thank you for doing that. As we've heard a little bit, words are a good step, but actions need to support our words. I printed out this just to point out a few things: hateful speech, harassment, and intimidation. I wonder today if this would have passed a few weeks ago, would this have meant that the OPOA would not have sent out disparaging mailers? Would that qualify as hate? I also wonder, when it's talking about extremist conspiracy theories, misinformation, and disinformation, if that would have prevented Councilmember Brennan from writing in her blog about the fire-breathing radicals, who is definitely a member of the woke establishment: "The radical left," she continues in America Today, "AOC and the Squad, Antifa, BLM, and others who have no intention of letting democracy get in their way. They are totalitarian socialists in the mold of Lenin, Mao, Castro, Polk, and Chavez. And if you think I'm using hyperbole to make a point, think again." She goes on to say, "Pete won't have any trouble in his race, and I mention it only because Sarah is part of the woke mob and crazy as hell." I'm just wondering, when we're talking about empathy, misinformation, disinformation, making sure that everyone is deserving of courtesy and respect, would that have changed anything? So again, I'm just here today to say thank you. I'm sure you'll all vote for it, and that's the right step, but it's one small step. We're all about accountability. There's been a lot of talk, and I would just like to encourage us all to make sure that our actions support our words. Thank you.
Next proponent, please. Seeing none, we'll move to opponents. Anyone wishing to testify in opposition to item six?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, and I have some evidence to present again this week. Evidence that it's just not my words, just not my knowledge. I'm not totally opposed to the resolution itself, but I am opposed to some of the wording, and I'm opposed to some of the proponents' wording and assertions. This morning, I was called a liar for presenting evidence that we are very close in this country to a revolution. And part of that is due to Marxism. People do not understand what Marxism is, but maybe they can understand that Marxism traditionally has killed millions of people. And we have an organization that's called BLM. Some of them say they're not Marxist, but the organizers of that BLM movement admit that they are Marxist-trained. Ladies and gentlemen, we are a constitutional republic, a compound constitutional republic that makes us different. And under that constitution, we are all equal. We do not need all this bullshit. We're all equal under the constitution.
Mr. Store, you'll maintain decorum.
Regardless of our color, we're equal.
Or you will be removed.
I will not leave yet.
You're out.
I'm not quite done. I will not use the word...
You're out.
I was called a liar in the meeting earlier this morning. Mr. Store, you need to leave your post here.
See you, Mr. Store. Any more out of you, you'll be cited for interference. Are there any other opponents wishing to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero.
Mayor Stothert, welcome back.
Well, thank you. Public service is a privilege and a responsibility, no matter how long you serve. President Jerem, and Councilwoman Gray, and I were elected to the city council in 2009 at the same time. Since then, we have worked together to manage our city and build a strong future for Omaha and its citizens. So thank you for working for your districts for 12 years and for serving in leadership positions on this city council. You have made important contributions that will last forever. Councilwoman Brennan, our time together has been brief. I want to thank you for representing my District 5 and also for your friendship, and I wish you the very best for your continued community service. It has always been my goal as mayor to work with the city council and to reach consensus with all of you on important issues, and I believe we have done that. So thank you for your ideas and your opinions and your solutions. Serving on the city council is like a part-time job with full-time responsibilities. You have all demonstrated a commitment to leadership, and I want to thank every one of you for your service. Now, there is one thing only the mayor of Omaha can do, and that is to give a presentation to everyday people for extraordinary work. And with that, I would like to call Councilwoman Jerem, and Councilwoman Gray, and Councilwoman Brennan down.
I thought you were going to convey pardon, mayor, with the other power.
You know what? If you need pardoning, that's still an option, but right now, what I would love to do, what I would like to do, and it's my honor to do, is to give each one of you a key to the city.
Oh, thank you. The big question is, will this get me into the parking garage? Madam Clerk.
Item seven was removed from the agenda, and no action is needed. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for Jean-Lay Hummel, replat 2, located northeast of 10th and Farnham Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Chris Gannig, HDR, 1917 South 67th Street, on behalf of the proponent.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Items nine through 12 can be considered together for Copper Creek, replat 1, located southeast of 168th Street and Military Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items nine and 10 are ordinances to rezone this property from AD District to DR District and R5 District. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 12, a resolution to approve an amendment to the subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items nine through 12 began at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the development and the developer, simply here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 13 through 17 can be considered together for Blackstone, located at 501 South 38th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 13, an ordinance to repeal the PUR overlay district and an NBD district for this property. Item 14, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district and an R6 district. Item 15 and 16 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 17, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 13 through 17 began at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Ted Zetsman, Auto Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exorban Village. Some of you may recall that we were here previously with a little bit bigger project. Just a few factors have revised that, downsized it, worked with the neighbors and planning staff to come up with a revised project that we think is worthy of your approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. And the neighbors have let me know they're very pleased with your change of design.
Nice to hear. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve the Harrison Street, South Central Omaha CRA for the area as described on the agenda.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. And this resolution asks the city council to consider designating part of Omaha as a community redevelopment area or CRA. The main reason we designate an area as a CRA is so that we can use TIF, tax increment financing, as a tool to help do economic redevelopment and revitalization of our older core areas of town. Let me zoom out a little. We already have quite a few areas designated as CRA. Those are the areas in kind of the pink or lavender. The area being considered today is the area in yellow, just for reference. This is 72nd Street, so it is the older portions of Omaha. Now, under state law, CRAs or areas that are to be designated as a CRA are designated as being blighted and substandard, terms we really don't like that well, but in any event, each term is specifically defined in state law, and each has their own criteria. The criteria are a little bit intricate, sometimes a little convoluted. There's the definition of blighted, definition of standard. In addition, blighted is... Let me give you a better view of the area. Blighted is also divided into a part A and part B, so it does get very involved. There's quantifiable data that we look at, that's measurable data. There's qualitative data, such as building conditions, which is a little bit more subjective. In any event, in your packets and published online for the community are the full definitions, the criteria for meeting those definitions, and the study. And the study goes into a great deal of detail in terms of how this area meets those definitions. So I think I'll just hit the highlights, though, since it is covered in the study. In terms of the quantitative data, the area we're looking at now complies in that the population has been declining. Per capita income is lower than the city's per capita income overall. The unemployment exceeds 120% of the state's unemployment rate, and the average age of structure is greater than 40 years. So you only need to meet one of these for the part B of blighted. It meets four of the five. In terms of the more qualitative data, condition of the area, this is South 60th Street. It has a major arterial north-south through the study area. See, the lane width is substandard, pavement's older. The shoulders are gravel or nonexistent. We have some outdoor storage that poorly screened. The infrastructure is older and not in the best of condition. Substandard, definitely. In terms of the buildings, we have metal-skinned pole barn buildings, poor circulation in terms of the road system. A lot of the access drives are gravel, considerable outdoor storage, some of which is on screen. So from the planning staff's perspective, the area meets the criteria for designation as a CRA. The designation's been reviewed and approved by the TIF committee, City Planning Board, and I ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Lynn McNally, 7055 South 1st Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, Executive Vice President, Nebraska Horsemen, and one of the property owners in the proposed CRA, here to answer any questions and in favor of this designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve the proposed extremely blighted areas for the areas as described on the agenda.
The public hearing on item 19 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. So before you is a request for an expanded extremely blighted area, and I wanted to take just a moment to talk about or describe and define an extremely blighted area. They all begin with a community redevelopment area, so this is a different version of the same map you saw with the case that Don just presented. So the areas in purple are community redevelopment areas, and community development law defines community redevelopment areas, substandard, blighted, extremely blighted area. So it governs a lot of... So it governs a lot of, most of what we do as it relates to TIF and these designations. So an extremely blighted area is a definition of the community development law and is in effect an additional layer or designation on top of the community redevelopment area layer and designation. It is essentially, and I'm paraphrasing, a CRA that has two additional quantitative demographic qualifications. It's an area with an average unemployment rate that is at least 200% of the average rate of unemployment in the state using the most recent federal decennial census or American Community Survey five-year estimates. And it's an area with an average poverty rate that exceeds 200%. The city recently, or previously designated a census geographies that formed the base map of an extremely blighted area using 217 five-year estimates. So that is this map. This designation, the census data was provided by David Drows of the UNO Center for Public Affairs Research. This designation was in response to a passage of a bill by state legislatures which in effect created a provision for state income tax credit to individuals purchasing qualifying residences in areas designated as extremely blighted for the taxable years beginning January 1, 2020 to January 1, 2026. This bill also allowed for affordable housing developers to receive special funding preferences when applying for, from the, to the Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust funds if the project was located in an extremely blighted area. The state legislatures recently passed and the governor signed a bill that extends the term, the TIF term, from 15 to 20 years. So now the benefits of an extremely blighted area designation are primarily the promotion of homeownership opportunities and the state income tax credit, promotion of affordable housing development, and a longer TIF term. So now moving to this request, this before you. This is the result of a request from a project owner in the Millwork area, Millwork Commons area, which is just north of downtown. And it is located in Census Track 5, Block Group 1. So what this map does is shows you, this highlighted blue area is a huge Census Track block group. So Census Track 5, Block Group 1. And the project site, subject site is located within it. They were interested in the designation. And our normal practice, when we are, when we receive a request for a CRA and now an extremely blighted area, is to look beyond the census geography of that subject site. And we do that because we want to look at what are some of the opportunities for redevelopment beyond that particular site. We want to make sure that there are opportunities that are going to be available for more than just one project. And we're of course wanting to promote and fulfill the redevelopment goals of the city. So this map also shows, in the green, the extremely blighted areas that already exist based on the map that I just showed you previously. So the study area, as stated, read by the clerk, essentially and this map is a slight variation in color from the map that was in your, in the study. But essentially, it's the river, Missouri River, on the north and the east. It's about 30th Street here, but mostly 24th on the west, and then about Hickory Street on the south. And the gray, the dark gray area that you see on this map represents the existing extremely blighted areas that had been designated previously. The yellow crosshatch indicates that those are areas that are community redevelopment areas. Because again, if anything is going to be designated as a extremely blighted area, it must be in a community redevelopment area. The orange represents the areas that were not extremely blighted but have the potential to be. So it became the expanded area that we're looking at. So what I did, what we did is we looked at what areas were already extremely blighted. So again, it's a lot of maps that we're looking at. So looking here, if I switch back to this map, you can see that there's some extremely blighted areas in green and then there are some holes. So these areas I already knew were community redevelopment areas, but they were opportunities for more redevelopment and particularly for housing up north and in this area, even in our downtown area. So we know that affordable housing is very, very important and we do want to see more housing in general. So this area was chosen because those census geographies were either adjacent to Census Track 5, Block Group 1, or very nearby. And that is again how we came up with the expanded orange area, which represents part of the study area. So after selecting the census geographies that would be included, 2019 five-year estimates census data was provided by David Drows of UNO for poverty and extremely, or excuse me, poverty and unemployment rates. And those rates were averaged. So I will take you to a table. So this table basically shows you, and it may be a little bit hard to see, but data that was provided by UNO. And these are the census block groups, all listed here in a row, and their unemployment rates, and then their poverty rates. They were added and then averaged. If we look at the standard to measure against, or rather the average rates for qualification for an extremely blighted area, the average rate for the unemployment area, for the unemployment rate that is 200% of the average rate of the state, that number is 6.8, 6.68. So when this data was pulled, so again, we're using the 2019 five-year estimates, Nebraska's unemployment rate was 3.3. 200% of that is 6.68. So that means if anything is going to qualify, it has to be greater than 6.68 in terms of unemployment. And in this case, the average was 9.86. Likewise, for the poverty rate, has to be, the average rate for the entire group needs to exceed 20%. Adding them up and averaging them all, we're at 31.69%. So based on that information, the groups of the entire group of census geographies do qualify and we do request the expansion to be approved as an extremely blighted area as it does qualify with our, complies with our master plan as well as the community development law. TIF committee, planning board have approved it. It does add another tool that we have in our toolbox to help with redevelopment and affordable housing and the such. I will add this here, I believe President Jerome asked about opportunity zones. Opportunity zones is just another tool that is available to investors if they invest in these particular areas. And these particular areas that are in green are the opportunity zones. This is on our website, if you can see it, it's planninghcd.cityofomaha.org/opportunity-zones. And anyone can find a lookup tool to see if their property is in an opportunity zone. But this is just another tool, and I did not overlay it, I apologize, but it could get a little crazy with some of these maps. But you can kind of see that there's somewhat of an overlap of these particular areas that are in opportunity zones as well as a CRA, as well as, I had another map, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area. So we're able to add more tools that just helps make redevelopment in our core area much more possible. So with that, I will ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Bridget, if you would, just come back to the microphone for a minute. I am supportive of this. I am supportive of the extremely blighted designation and what that can do for our areas most in need of economic development and affordable housing. And I know that was the intent of the legislation that was proposed by Senator Wayne. We thank him for that. And so I wanted to talk just a little bit further about this particular expansion. And thanks for walking through it there with the explanation and all the maps. I think that's helpful. The expansion is what we're referring to as Track 4 today, right?
No. So the expansion would be these areas that you see in orange. So that includes, and I apologize, I don't have these marked with Census Track block groups, but a lot of this is Census Track 5, Block Group 1, which was part of the requester's request. But I also looked at other areas. So some of these areas, I think that's Census Block Group 11, or part of Census Track 11 and 12.
Okay.
So there are various census tracks or census geographies that are a part of this expansion.
Okay. And it was generated by the request of a developer to the north there, but expands to the south for reasons of it being a consistent census tract. And I think from your perspective, mirrors then the opportunity zone as well, right?
Correct.
I think that was the question we received in a letter from Senator Wayne and Senator McKinney. Just, not in opposition, but just wanted to know the rationale for it going this far south as it does to Hickory Street. And in your mind, that's the census tract, that's the opportunity zone, but also you're seeing opportunities for housing projects in that area too, right?
Absolutely. And with, downtown is our, the city center image according to the, I think, the master's, master plan, concept plan. And we have with the 2030 downtown master plan been working really hard to promote a lot of types of development, but certainly residential. And with that residential has come a lot of entertainment. When we talk about the north downtown area. So we need to make sure we have affordable housing for all of our jobs, particularly service jobs as we promote more of an entertainment venue in our downtown, old market, north downtown area. So, and other jobs, just any jobs, we want to make sure that there's housing. And we definitely need to make sure there's affordable housing as well. So a good mix of housing is important. And with the extremely blighted area designation, having two of the components referring to housing, homeownership as well as affordable housing, housing becomes very important to make sure that we can use that tool to promote housing there.
Okay. And obviously by the data you just walked through, you're confident this fits those, that criteria?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd motion to approve.
Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, a resolution to approve the Mastercraft Building Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1111 North 13th Street in an amount up to $1,595,000.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, from the Omaha City Planning Department. On behalf of the project, the Mastercraft Building project will renovate a unusable, presently unusable, 12,000 to 15,000 square foot portion of the building. Mastercraft Building is in the Millwork Commons area, kind of an up and coming area where we've seen a lot of good things happening just kind of north of the TD Ameritrade Stadium. With your action on the previous item, this project is within an extremely blighted area. This will be your first TIF project, if approved, to have a 20-year TIF term. Project costs are a little north of $19 million. In terms of hard construction costs, they're looking at $4.6 million. About 3.5 of that is going to go into, at the south end of the site, south of the building, into a public green space. It's being designed and built as an amenity or an attraction to help enhance the entire Millwork Commons district. About 3.5 million in just the green space construction. They will be dedicating a public access easement for this area of about 1.2 acres to ensure that it is eligible for receiving TIF funding support. Developers Black Dog Management LLC, managed by Paul G. Smith. This project meets the TIF program requirements. It's an appropriate land use for the area, complies with the city's master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Kendra Ringenberg, 1318 North 187th Street. I'm here on behalf of the developer, I'm counsel for them. I'd just like to add that on the public access easement, that the point of it, I mean, it is obviously to make it TIF-eligible, but also we believe it'll be an amenity, not just for the Millwork Commons, for the entire downtown area. We've worked through all the parameters of that with legal department and have that ready to go. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to help. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero. Item 21, a resolution to approve the Blackstone Plaza Building Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3555 Farnham Street in an amount up to $5,994,326.
The public hearing on item 21 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. So before you is the Blackstone Plaza Building TIF. And on this aerial, you can see where the site is, highlighted in blue, shaded in blue. So this is Farnham Street, 36th Street, Harney Street, kind of orient you, so midtown area. This particular site here has about three or four parcels to it. There's the tower, the garage, that's above ground as well as below. And then there's a two-story building here. Also, part of the ownership has ownership of these sites, excuse me, these surface lots over here to the southwest. The TIF, however, is only going to be for the tower. Many may know this as the former Keywit Plaza Tower or Office Building, where Keywit has now relocated to north downtown.
Excuse me, Bridget. Can we have the person with electronic device please silence it? Thank you. And just as a reminder to everyone, please silence or turn off electronic devices. Thank you.
So the office tower is a 15-story office tower. Again, the former headquarters of Keywit Corporation that's relocated to their headquarters to downtown and has unfortunately, but fortunately, good and bad, left the building about 70 to 80% vacant. So Blackstone Plaza LLC, John Lund is the manager, and John is here as the manager of that as well as the owner, has decided to take this on to make sure that this building is repurposed into more of a multi-tenant building and then to add ground floor retail, which this has not had, which is intended to also include, or to include a restaurant and some retail concepts on the ground floor. I think I've got a couple of renderings here. So again, showing you 15 stories, there's the Plaza Club at the top. Down here is where the new retail would be located. And then just a rendering of the entrance, oops, sorry about that, to the building. In this particular project, there wasn't a lot of public infrastructure to, or public improvements to be done and that's because they're located in midtown and in on Farnham Street where there's been a lot of concentration to the public realm and the streetscaping and whatnot. So there wasn't any public improvements recommended by our department or even Public Works. However, the applicant is contributing 60,000 of their TIF to the Midtown Public Improvement Fund, which is set aside to help with general public improvements in the midtown area. And it can be streetscaping in that midtown area, street trees, sidewalks, curbs, could be signage that may be used in that midtown area. So anything that is enhancing the public environment, we work with those funds with the Public Works Department and our planning department to get those projects done. This particular project anticipates creating 40 jobs, working in the restaurants, retail, and event services. In addition, 10 full-time building men. In addition, 10 full-time building management jobs, 40 construction jobs. So, there will be jobs created over time with this particular project. The amount of TIF they're asking for is almost 6 million, which happens to be about 15, almost 16% of the capital stack or of the investment. All of that, of those TIF funds are going toward the rehabilitation costs only. Just to note, there are over 36 million in eligible TIF costs. The project investment is about 37.7 million. This project does comply with the master plan by contributing to the transformation of the Farnum-Harney corridor into a dominant mixed-use regional draw, as called for by the Destination Midtown Plan, through its addition of the new ground floor retail and restaurant space, as well as renovated office spaces. We have received TIF committee approval and planning board recommendation of approval, and with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Mr. Smith, welcome.
Dan Smith, Snuselsky Law, 8712 West Dodge Road. Hard to improve on what Bridget's presentation was, and you have all the materials. John Lund, who is the owner and developer, is here with me. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Lund.
Thank you. Good afternoon. John Lund, 450 Regency Parkway. I am the owner, developer of the subject property, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, seven to zero. Item 22, a resolution to approve the 18 Howard Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1819 Howard Street and 1810 St. Mary's Avenue in an amount up to $3,540,728.
The public hearing on item 22 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This apartment project combines two vacant parcels, both presently used as surface parking facilities for the construction of a new five-story apartment building with approximately 120 to 124 units. This is located at 18th and Howard, just a short distance south of where we're at at the moment. This is a mixed-income apartment project, so it's an affordable housing project for downtown, something we definitely appreciate. And the mixed income is also really a good feature of this particular project. There will be market rate units, but there will also be units that are financed with LIHTC, that's low-income housing tax credits. That means that the tenants of the LIHTC financed units need to be income-qualified, so they're moderate to lower-income tenants for the LIHTC units. And out of the 120 to 124 units in the building, about 74 of them will be the LIHTC affordable housing units. The developer is 18 Howard LLC. It's managed by Nearridge Aggerwall. Total project cost is approximately $41.4 million. The request for TIF support is $3,540,728. Project meets the criteria for the city's TIF program. It's really a good use, I think, and a good addition for this portion of downtown. It's an appropriate land use, and it complies with our city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, seven to zero. Item 23, a resolution to approve the Outlook Properties Industrial Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 6935 F Street in an amount up to $1,166,829.
The public hearing on item 23 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon. Once again, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This project is another new construction project. It involves the construction of a new warehouse distribution center of about 149,000 square feet on a vacant parcel of approximately 11.7 acres. This is 72nd Street, 80, just to kind of get you oriented. This will be a one-story building with the flexibility to accommodate one major tenant or up to four smaller ones. It'll have higher garage doors and ceiling heights, it'll be a nice new distribution center, something that will compete well with a lot of the older ones that we have presently in this part of town. There'll be room on the site for approximately 220 parking spaces, plus parking stalls for about 47 semi-trailers. Project cost total is about 13 and a half million dollars. The developers requesting $1,166,829 in TIF support. The developer helping the project is the White Lotus Group, working on behalf of the owner, which is Outlook Properties East 72 LLC. That's a for-profit subsidiary of Outlook Nebraska, which is a parent entity that is a nonprofit that helps visually impaired. The LLC is managed by Eric Stucraft. And again, this project is an appropriate land use for the area, complies with the city's master plan, been approved by the planning board, and meets all the criteria of the city's TIF program. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 is approved, seven to zero. Item 24, to consider a class C liquor license application for Main Street Cellar located at 2714 North Main Street.
The public hearing on item 24 begins at this time. We have the applicant, Mr. Ford.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Ford, 4407 North 195th Circle, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24 is approved, seven to zero. Item 25, to consider a class C liquor license application for Pasta Amore located at 11027 Prairie Brook Road, A's Communication and Support.
The public hearing on item 25 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Is anyone here for Pasta Amore? We have time. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 26, to consider a class C liquor license application for Billy O's Lounge located at 14242 Fort Street.
The public hearing on item 26 begins at this time. We have the applicant, Mike and Kim Britton.
Yeah, my name is Mike Britton, 4732 Manny Lane Blair. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 26 is approved, seven to zero. Item 27, to consider a change of location application for Benson Theater B-Side to locate 26054 Maple Street.
The public hearing on item 27 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon. I'm Aaron Weiner, 2708 North 53rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Here as a proponent, I'm a former board member of Benson Theater and glad to answer any questions that I could answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Might stick around?
Amy Ryan, 8844 North 83rd Avenue. I'm the executive director of the Benson Theater and here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Mr. President, Amy, if you would, just come down for a minute. I'm supportive of this item, of course. I just wanted to get the update on the Benson Theater project.
Well, thank you for asking. It's looking absolutely beautiful. We look to have a soft open August 1st for a grand opening in September.
Excellent. I was up there just last week. It's really coming together, and we have our sign figured out too, don't we?
Yes. It'll be a 20-foot Benson blade sign that will, I think, really assist the community. So, thank you.
Excellent. Well, it's going to be a great addition to the Benson Business District there, and I would motion to approve and waive Rule 7, right?
No further lights, roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson.
Yes.
Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 28, to consider an addition application for Block 16 located at 1609-1611 Farnum Street to add an outdoor area approximately 22 feet by 10 feet, A's Communication and Support, B's Communication Opposition.
The public hearing on item 28 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Paul and Jessica Urban, 1611 Farnum Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. You may stick around. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. A Mr. Urban? Or Jessica? Whenever we receive applications regarding liquor licenses, we get a report from the finance director and his department in terms of occupation taxes, delinquencies, and things like that. And they report that there is a restaurant tax balance outstanding on your establishment. And so, have you been made aware of that by the finance department?
I'll have to check the mail, but no, we're never late on that.
Okay, so...
So, I'll pay it today. I didn't realize.
Yeah. And if you can't pay it all at one time, they will make a payment plan for you.
Oh, no, we can, if I missed a month, then I'll just go pay it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 28 is approved, seven to zero. Item 29, to consider an addition application for Lilo's Cafe located at 4952 Dodge Street to add an outdoor area approximately 21 feet by 26 feet, A's Communication and Support.
The public hearing on item 29 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
And Mr. President, members of council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here for any questions you might have on this matter.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 29 is approved, seven to zero. Item 30, to consider an addition application for Club 5216 located at 5216 North 24th Street to add an outdoor area approximately 100 feet by 110 feet, A's Communication from the planning department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
The public hearing on item 30 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, again, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing here with Mr. John Machetti, the licensee. This is for an outdoor area at this particular property. It's basically to accommodate Native American days, which, celebrating the Omaha Indians, which they have, and it's biannual, they'll have it in late July, August. We do understand there may be some opposition, and we're here for questions. And if there is any, we'd like to hear what they have to say. We have not had a communication with them. If there is, we'd like to be able to rebut that a little bit, talk about it, and then otherwise, we're here for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Okay, if you could have a seat, we'll ask for opponents. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. What's the... Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to let people know, first of all, that this is, this club has been for the last couple of times, has been the headquarters for the Native Omaha Club. It's the Native Omaha Club. And the Native Omaha days, when the Native Omahas come to town, and this year is that year. And so, I'm very appreciative of the Kirk and the folks continuing to be supportive of this biannual effort that goes on every year, and it's really a great treat for everyone. And thanks a lot for continuing to do this. And motion approved, subject to getting the permits.
Right. We understand that.
Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 31, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Maha Festival for events at Stinson Park located at 6707 Center Street for an outdoor concert on Saturday, July 31st, from 2:00 p.m. to midnight, with music ending at midnight.
The public hearing on item 31 begins at this time. We have the applicants, Ms. Martin and Ms. Cox. Welcome.
Hi, this is Lauren Martin, 725 North Portt Duke Street in Omaha. I'm the executive director and here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll leave most of the comments to the more musically inclined Councilman Festerson, but I do want to say that this is truly a sign that we are coming out of the woods and knowing that we are going to have Maha Festival again. Could not make me any happier and glad to see it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, the percussionist.
Thanks, Mr. President. And for a non-musician, that was very well said, Councilman Harding. I'm not sure I can say that better. We are excited to see this return. Lauren, you want to talk a little bit about just what's different this year? Obviously, it's one day, but anything else you want people to know?
Thanks for the opportunity for this. We are equally thrilled to be back. It was a kind of prolonged period of uncertainty, and so, we did make the decision that we've been a multi-day, multi-venue event for the last few festivals prior to 2020. We realized that going fully outdoors, committing to one day, really maintaining the core, as well as implementing safety measures, such as allowing all attendees to remain physically distanced, increasing sanitation measures, things like that. We're all going to make the event an incredible celebration to bring the community together, as well as one that is not negatively impacting public safety. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, I think everybody's really excited to have this back and to see some live music. Can you tell us when you're going to announce your headliners? Are you on mute there?
Sorry. I'm unmuted now.
I asked you to announce. I said, "When might you announce?"
We are announcing tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m. So, this is perfect timing, and I feel like the excitement's kind of stumbling out of me now.
Excellent. We look forward to hearing it. And I should note, in addition, I should have noted also on the previous item, number 29, what that is, is also a reopening of a cafe and the soon-to-reopen Dundee Film Streams. So, this is all very exciting, several of these items we have on agenda today. And I would, of course, approve, motion to approve number 31.
And I'll just say, in all the years I've been on the council, I think I had one complaint when there used to be, before the UNO arena went in. And two years ago, I had as many complaints as last year, zero. So, and we know why there weren't on last year. So, you do a very good job in managing your event and keeping your neighbors happy and including them in your plans. So, thank you to all you do. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 31 is approved, seven to zero. Item 32, a resolution to set a hearing to determine if the Class I liquor license held by The Good Life Sports Bar and Grill located at 1203 South 180th Street should be revoked.
The city prosecutor's, city attorney's office will present first. The city prosecutor's, city attorney's office will present first. Mr. Wiesen? First, Mr. Wiesen, will you have live testimony or just the packet?
Brian Wiesen, Assistant City Attorney. I'll begin by introducing some exhibits into the record, city council record, and providing a brief overview. Then Officer Bossman and Lieutenant Wells are here to answer questions of the council and to add any testimony that they see fit as well.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Good afternoon. The Nebraska Liquor Control Act authorizes a local governing body to revoke a liquor license within its jurisdiction when cause exists to do so, subject to an appeal to the Liquor Control Commission, or when the local governing body has determined that any license holder has violated any provision of the Liquor Control Act, or when any ordinance, rule, resolution, regulation concerning liquor has been violated. We're here today because of a series of events that began on December 25th, 2020. I'll start by identifying exhibits that I will submit to the city council for inclusion in the record, and then I will move into a relatively brief narrative of what occurred.
Would you start with just a brief summary of what you believe is the basis for the revocation, and then go into your evidence, so that we have a scope of relevancy for testimony today?
I can do that. Just a basic overview is that on December 25th, a number of minors, as defined by statute, I believe there were six, were at The Good Life in Omaha, Nebraska, located at 1203 South 180th Street. They were served alcoholic beverages at that location without being carded or otherwise ID'd to determine what their age was. One of those individuals then got into his motor vehicle and drove away from the scene. He was involved in a serious motor vehicle accident with, which resulted in three broken vertebrae, among other injuries. During the subsequent alcohol procurement investigation and DUI and MIP investigations, officers were dispatched to The Good Life at that location to retrieve video evidence from the indoor and exterior security cameras. They were met with resistance from the managers and the owner of the premises, which ultimately resulted in a search warrant being executed upon the premises and the video equipment being seized. A review of that equipment indicated that the system was subsequently reformatted, and we believe the evidence will show here at the council today with an intent to destroy evidence and hinder the investigation into the source investigation.
Thank you.
The first item, which has been marked as Exhibit 1, is a five-page police report into the DUI and MIP investigations. And I'll refer to this interchangeably along with the other exhibits. The second documentary evidence marked as Exhibit 2 is a subpoena from the county attorney directing that Chad McMahon, or the custodian of records of The Good Life Sports Bar and Grill, is directed to provide interior and exterior video from 1203 South 180th Street for the entire day of December 25th, 2020. The third piece of evidence for the record marked as Exhibit 3 is a police report detailing the evidence destruction investigation, and that is a three-page report. What has been marked as Exhibit 4 is a supplementary, one-page report detailing the evidence destruction investigation. What has been marked as Exhibit 5 is again another one-page supplementary report detailing the DUI and alcohol source investigation. What has been marked as Exhibit 6 is a three-page report detailing the digital forensic analysis that was conducted of Chad McMahon's, the proprietor of The Good Life cellphone, when it was seized for investigative purposes. What has been marked for identification as Exhibit 7 is a two-page Celebrite extraction report detailing relevant phone calls that were made from Mr. McMahon's cellphone related to this investigation. What has been marked as Exhibit 8 is the tavern report that was issued for this incident. Exhibits 9 and 10 are criminal citations that were issued to the server and manager at The Good Life on December 25th, involved in the selling and procurement of alcohol to minors that were issued in this case. And what has been marked as Exhibit 11 is a criminal complaint filed in Sarpy County detailing charges of first-degree assault, a Class II felony that were filed against Mr. McMahon relating to an April 2nd, 2021 incident.
Okay, so criminal citations to the manager and the server for serving a minor, criminal complaint in Sarpy on a different event, but no criminal complaint related to the evidence, correct?
Related to the evidence destruction at this time, that is correct.
Okay.
I additionally have a flash drive marked as Exhibit 12, which contains two brief body camera video clips detailing statements that Mr. McMahon made to Officer Bossman at various times of the incident, and I'll play those clips as well during my review of the timeline of events. On December 25th, 2020, at approximately 9:48 p.m., Tyler Sherman was involved in a serious injury vehicle accident and suffered three broken vertebrae, among other injuries, after drinking with underage friends at The Good Life Sports Bar and Grill in Omaha, Nebraska, at 1203 South 180th Street. This information could be obtained from Exhibits 1, 3, 8, 9, and 10. Then at approximately 10:39 p.m. on December 25th, Tyler Sherman's father, Scott Sherman, left the scene of the accident where he had arrived near 138th and Hughes Street and drove to The Good Life to confront the manager on duty at the time. This information can be found in Exhibits 1 and 3. Scott Sherman arrived at The Good Life and confronted the manager on duty, Dan Satterly, notifying him that minors had been drinking without being ID'd or carded at The Good Life, informing him that one of those minors had been involved in a serious injury automotive accident, and demanding to see security camera footage from the bar. And I have this tabbed and highlighted for the council to see. It's from Exhibit 1 on page 4. The relevant section from this report states, quote, "Scott stated that he got upset after he learned that his 20-year-old son, along with his friends, had been served alcohol at The Good Life. Scott stated that once he knew Tyler was alive and heading to the hospital, Scott left the scene and went to The Good Life and confronted the on-duty manager, Dan Satterly, as well as Jillian, the waitress, who had been serving the boys. Scott stated he had demanded that the manager pull up the video of the boys drinking, and that it would show that none of the boys had a fake ID, and that Jillian did not ID anyone before serving them. Scott stated that he eventually left after it was clear that he was not going to get any video or make any progress at the bar that night." Now, this is important because it's evidence, it shows that on the night of the incident, the manager and The Good Life were put on notice that minors were present in their premises, that they had been served alcohol and consumed alcohol in their premises, and that they were in possession of video evidence related to the violation of the Liquor Control laws in the DUI and MIP source investigations. Beginning at 10:58 p.m., shortly after Mr. Satterly, or excuse me, Mr. Sherman, was at The Good Life and ending at 11:18 p.m., seven calls were exchanged between the manager, Dan Satterly, and the owner of The Good Life, Chad McMahon. Four of these were missed calls, and three of these calls were completed, totaling seven minutes and 57 calls of speaking time. And we have this information from Exhibit 7, the Celebrite extraction report of Mr. McMahon's cellphone. These phone calls are documented beginning on page 2, at line 15, and going up through page 1 on entry number 9. These are the phone calls that indicate communication on that evening shortly after the incident occurred between Mr. McMahon and Mr. Satterly, we believe indicating an evidence that Mr. McMahon was notified of the incident at his establishment, and he was made aware of the demand to see video evidence at that time. Then on December 30th, 2020, Officer Mike Bossman was charged with investigating the incident and obtained a subpoena for video evidence from the county attorney's office and went to The Good Life to serve it upon Chad McMahon, arriving at approximately 10:49 a.m. This information can be found in Exhibits 1, 2, and 3. And again, for reference, here is Exhibit 2. The highlighted portion directs Mr. McMahon to provide interior and exterior video from 1203 South 180th Street location for the entirety of the day of Friday, December 25th, 2020.
So that's five days later?
That's correct. Officer Bossman met with the manager on duty, who was Andy Foucher, who informed Officer Bossman that Chad McMahon was out of town. This information can be found in Exhibits 1 and 3. Andy Foucher called and spoke to Chad McMahon, and they communicated twice while Officer Bossman was in the presence of Mr. Foucher on December 30th, 2020. Mr. Foucher eventually relayed to Officer Bossman that Chad McMahon did not want anyone accessing the video recording system other than himself. And this information can be found on Exhibits 1 and 3, and then again, the Celebrite call log information can be found on Exhibit 7. After Officer Bossman left The Good Life, Chad McMahon called Andy Foucher, who was the manager on duty who Officer Bossman spoke to, and spoke to him for three minutes at 11:08 a.m. This is item entry 6 on Exhibit 7, on page 1. Chad McMahon then calls Dan Satterly, the manager on duty the evening of December 25th, who he exchanged several calls with after Mr. Sherman was at the bar demanding to see the video evidence, and spoke to him for 6 minutes and 33 seconds at approximately 11:12 a.m. This information can be found in Exhibits 3 and 7. On Exhibit 7, the call item is item number 5. Then at approximately 11:19, 30 minutes after Officer Bossman showed up at The Good Life with a subpoena for video evidence, Mr. McMahon placed a call to an individual listed in his phone as Aaron Audiovisual, an individual who we know is Chad McMahon's security IT specialist. The call lasted for two seconds. This can be found in Exhibit 3 and Exhibit 7, line item 4.
What's his name?
It's listed as Aaron Audiovisual in the call logs.
And what's the full name?
Aaron Faray, I believe. The security system IT specialist then immediately called Mr. McMahon back at 11:20 a.m., and the two speak for 3 minutes and 53 seconds. This information can be found in Exhibit 3 and Exhibit 7. On Exhibit 7, it's line item number 3. Officer Bossman contacted Chad McMahon by phone the next day on December 31st, 2020, at 9:15 a.m. to ask him to meet him at The Good Life to view the video evidence. The phone call lasted for 2 minutes and 3 seconds. Mr. McMahon refused, saying he was at another location and couldn't make it. This information is in Exhibits 1, 3, and 7. On Exhibit 7, the call log is item number 2. Then after McMahon, Mr. McMahon hung up the phone with Officer Bossman. He called his security system IT specialist at 9:17 and 50 seconds a.m., and the two talked for 1 minute and 42 seconds. This information could be found on Exhibits 3 and in Exhibit 7, line item number 1. The Omaha Police Department then subsequently seized the video recording equipment pursuant to a warrant, required authorized search warrant, and conducted a forensic analysis on the system, finding that the video, that the recorded video log was cleared on December 31st, 2020, at 10:41 and 41 seconds a.m., approximately an hour and a half after Mr. McMahon spoke with his IT specialist. This information can be found on Exhibit 3 on page 2, and I'll direct you to the entire paragraph in this report.
All right, let us catch up with it.
Exhibit 3, page 2.
Which paragraph you're gonna be?
It'll be the highlighted paragraph, and the highlighted on the screen in the middle, it's not highlighted, I believe, on the copies.
The one that starts the Omaha Police Department Forensic Squad?
That's correct.
Okay.
The Omaha Police Department Forensic Squad analyzed the DVR system that was seized from The Good Life. The recorded video log shows that the log was cleared on December 31st, 2020, at 10:41:41. On 12:31, 2020, at 10:42:41, the log shows a local user logged in as admin doing a search of the DVR system from 12:31, 20, at 12 o'clock a.m. to 12:31, 2020, at 11:59:59 p.m., which indicates an intentional act of searching for saved recorded video. On 12:31, 2020, at 10:51:01, the admin user logged in from an IP address, which was assigned to a T-Mobile Sprint cellphone, which was the same as the IT specialist's cellphone, doing searches of the DVR. The affiant officer counted at least eight recorded searches during this particular remote login session. Affiant officer, which is Officer Bossman, believes this shows an intent to confirm the erasure and reset of the DVR recording system, which occurred, which deleted the Christmas night, December 25th, 2020, evidentiary video that affiant officer requested from Mr. McMahon. In addition to this general timeline and overview, there are other exhibits that detail an intent to interfere with and impede the investigation. On Exhibit 4 details a phone call that Lieutenant John Wells had to make to Mr. McMahon, who had attempted to contact two other officers to seek information and question and interfere with the investigation.
What is that? I didn't hear that.
So I'll read the relevant portions.
What exhibit are you on?
Exhibit 4. It says, "McMahon contacted Officer Furman and Officer Wooton via text. Both officers reported the contact to Lieutenant Wells, which prompted the phone call to McMahon. Lieutenant Wells told McMahon that he was getting fair warning to refrain from contacting any Omaha police officer about this case other than Officer Bossman, who was the investigative officer, Lieutenant Wells was the supervising investigator. Mr. McMahon had been reaching out to these officers about this case. When the appropriate contacts were Officer Bossman and Officer McMahon, he was warned that continuing to do so may qualify as attempting to interfere in the investigation." Additionally, when Officer Nielsen was attempting to complete the tavern report, he contacted The Good Life and spoke to the manager on duty to get information for the tavern report. And relevant, the relevant portions of this report state that reporting officer contacted the manager on duty, Dan Satterly, who put reporting officer on hold, and answered the phone after moving to what was possibly an office phone. At some time during the conversation with Satterly, the phone call must have been placed on speakerphone, and another person was included in the conversation. The name of the second person was possibly Chad. Reporting officer heard the second person become argumentative with reporting officer on the phone and began to make statements about having Todd on his cellphone, and he would be calling Todd, and he guaranteed that he would not be getting a tavern report. Clearly, this attempt at intimidating the officers and an attempt to prevent them from filling out the tavern report and completing their investigation was unsuccessful. Next, I'll play the two recorded video statements from Mr. McMahon. Both are short clips and have Mr. McMahon making statements indicating that if he were to provide, if he would have provided the video evidence to the officers, he would be self-incriminating himself.
Hey, I wish it wouldn't have had to come to this.
No, I know.
All you would have had to do is let me look at the video.
I know.
Or show me, show me that it was deleted, or had written over, if that is in fact the case. I mean, I don't, I don't like doing all of this either.
I know, and I...
And you told me you were gonna have your IT guy call me.
I, I, no reason why. I 100% talked to him. I said, "Will you give this guy a call?" Obviously, he has a light, it's how it is. I mean, I didn't, he didn't know what it was all... Obviously, he has a light. It's how it is. I mean, I didn't, he didn't know what it was all. I just said, hey, can you go up here and meet this guy? You want to get some of the footage? I didn't know how serious it was.
Well, when the police are asking you for video about something.
I'm pro-police.
I understand. I understand all that. I don't need the caveat. I'm just saying, when the police are here asking you for video for something from your business, if in fact you're pro-police, I would think, hey, by God, come on in and look at it.
Well, but I was going to self-incriminate myself.
You told me nothing happened.
Well, nothing did.
Okay, then why would you self-incriminate yourself?
Well, this is an special one. What happens to places that don't have cameras? There's no law that says I have to have a camera.
No.
I'm more than happy, like I said.
You don't want to be in the presentation. That's our deputy clip.
And the second clip.
Oh, what? A kid came in, left my establishment, got a car wreck.
Right. As you said, it's really not that big of a deal, but you turned it into a huge deal.
By doing what? I mean, the only thing I said on the cameras was, the only good that can come out of it, right? It's nothing for me. I'm self-incriminating. If you guys are looking at the work harding him or not, the only, there's nothing good that comes out of it. So let's just say I have a bar that doesn't have cameras, or they don't work. Then, why me spending $20,000 on this awesome camera system or whatever it was? Why would I want to? So that's all I was saying. I don't know if I come off as arrogant, or I'm not trying to be at all. I swear to God, I'm not. I'm just telling you, when you tell me that, why would I want to give you, why would I say, sure? Because the only thing that can come out of it, to me, would be negative, right? You're not going to go, oh, you guys did high five, good job. So of course, I'm not just going to say, here, take a look at this. I mean, that's just, so if you'd have said, hey, just let me take a look, this is all.
How about this? Go on, then switch to our.
So there are multiple potential issues here. The conduct that's in these reports can evidence that the license holder or its owner, agents, and employees showed evidence of a violation of Nebraska Liquor Control Commission Rule and Regulation 019.01a, sale to a minor, 019.01b, minor in possession with licensed premises, 019.01g, entry into a licensed premises by a law enforcement officer, 019.01n, sale to visibly intoxicated person, violations of Omaha Municipal Code Section 15-4, sale to minors or incapacitated persons, violation of Omaha Municipal Code Section 20-21, obstructing law enforcement officer or firefighter. Additionally, there are two currently pending criminal cases against Dan Satterley, the manager on duty the night of December 25th, and the server, Gillian Carson, under CR 216712 and CR 216343 for violation of Nebraska Vice Statute 53-180, sell to a minor or incompetent. And each case has six counts of procuring or selling alcohol to a minor, each of which is a Class 1 misdemeanor. The resolution that's presented before the council today is not to determine whether or not the license should be revoked. It's to determine whether or not there is enough merit in the allegations that have been made to warrant a formal revocation hearing. If the council approves the resolution today, that formal revocation hearing will be set. It will be set next Tuesday, and full due process protections will kick in at that point. There's a procedure for the hearings set forth in the Omaha Municipal Code. If the resolution is passed likely tomorrow, the city clerk will send a formal notice of revocation hearing to the license holder and his attorney, detailing the charges set forth and the process that will take place. And then the council will determine at that hearing whether or not there's enough evidence to formally revoke the license. I am here for any further questions. Officer Bossman and Lieutenant Wells are also here if they want to provide additional context or to answer questions from the council as well.
Well, let's start with Lieutenant Wells. Do you wish to add anything?
Not this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Officer Bossman, do you wish to add anything?
Mike Bossman, Omaha Police Department. I'm assigned to the traffic unit, crash investigations. Ryan did a fantastic job giving a summary of the case. I'm here to answer any questions specifically if you have them.
Okay. I don't see anything in the reports from this Aaron Faray. Mr. Weeson, did you want to tackle that?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney. It's my understanding that at this point in time, Mr. Faray has not provided any statement to the Omaha Police Department.
Has he been asked and invoked his Fifth Amendment rights, or has he just not been asked?
I would refer you to the police department as it may be an ongoing investigation.
Okay. All right, so if that concludes your presentation, since we're in the hearing on what we'll call probable cause, we'll hear briefly from the applicant, and then we'll open up the public hearing for everyone else who came down and talked today. Mr. Kelly, did you wish to be heard?
I'm Mr. President, member of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 37th Avenue. Here on behalf of Mr. McMahon, who's here. The evidence of Mr. Weeson, who did a very capable job of presenting, was kind of hard to watch because it's not the best day for any licensee client I've ever had. There's no question that he didn't handle this the best way he could have. The officer told him perfectly, you're making a big, this will turn into a big thing. It shouldn't have. The problem I have with the resolution going forward and so on is that this is really a departure, going right to a revocation hearing. The first we knew of it was Thursday. Going right to a revocation hearing is a huge departure from the city's past practices. I represented a lot of licensees over the years, way too many years than I care to remember. And the city's been wonderful always about working with us, talking to us, and try to see if there's some way to rehabilitate someone. Here you have a licensee who's been at this location, has other locations as well, but he's been in business for nine years with no liquor violations. So you've got to look a little bit at the whole body of work of this particular person. Here, he was, you know, but the other funny thing about this, ironic part about it is, there's really no question that we served the minors that evening. That's, we don't need the videotape to prove that. We admit that. So that's kind of the ironic part of this whole thing. But the other thing is, this matter has been referred to the Douglas County Attorney's Office. They are examining it for possible tampering with evidence and so on. That has led to our IT person having an attorney who advised him not to talk to the police. That has, Mr. McMahon has a criminal attorney who advised him not to talk at this hearing. We have other two people who have represented, so we don't, our hands are tied behind our back. Mr. Weeson's a lot more nimble than I am to begin with. When you tie my hands behind my back, it's pretty hard to represent this situation. But my point is that this is going too fast. I think we ought to slow this train down a little bit. We would love to be in a position where you would take some time, maybe place this matter on file or do something other to delay it, allow us to work with the liquor committee. And based on the evidence you have, I understand how we got here. You know, this is egregious, and it didn't have to be. But, you know, if we could have some time, I believe we could try to, number one, try to rehabilitate Mr. McMahon with law enforcement, which he shattered that relationship, which is very sad to see. One of the things I pride myself on always is instructing clients to absolutely unequivocally follow the police. Should he have turned over those, any video evidence he had? Now, there's a possibility that it wasn't even existing then, but we don't know now. So, and there are things we could bring in, in contrast to some of the things that were said here. But again, I can't bring them in because I don't have any witnesses. That's why this procedure, in my view, at this point, is grossly unfair, and mostly it's premature. So, I guess, the other thing I talked briefly about is coming epidemic in this country, minors drinking. We have evidence that these minors did have ID. We have some evidence that they were carded. That's a difference of opinion. I wish we had the tape to prove that. And again, I always tell my clients, preserve the tape. 95% of the time, it helps the licensee. But the minor issue is something we could work on. That's something I'd love to work on with the liquor committee. There are some things in Nebraska law defenses, minors book, things like that. That is something maybe the industry, we could kind of round up and do some, maybe some real good could come of this. But at the present time, what's your step forward? I just think it's completely premature to go to a full evidentiary hearing to revoke this license. And that's a death penalty. And you've had so many other situations, and I've been a part of some of them, where you've had nightclubs that had clear and present public safety issues. I don't think there's any clear and present safety issue here. There may be an allegation that Mr. McMahon is not fit to have a license, and he's got a couple criminal, one potential and one other one going on. I think we should sit back, let the dust settle, and let that play out a little bit. I thought he was going to be in front of the liquor commission on this matter in June. I'm now, probably going to be July, so I had bad information on that. But, and again, I just caution you, I think when we, because this is a first offense. First offense, sale to minor, and first offense, non-cooperation. I just think we ought to step back and maybe we could educate him. Believe me, I've talked to him several days in a row now. He is very remorseful that this thing got so out of shape. I really think he could be rehabilitated, and I would hope that we could rehabilitate or try to rehabilitate his contacts with Omaha Police and with his relationship. The, again, we're just going, we need to slow this train down for a second, I humbly ask you. Again, there's a lot more I could say. I guess the big issue is, what does a hearing accomplish us next week? I would also point out to you, and this is just speculation on my part, that a negative effect, if you do even have the hearing, in addition to the fact that we will lose employees, which are gold right now, we would lose them because there will be all kinds of concerns about closure of the business. That would be a big, that would be a big issue. I also think licensees, I know this industry. I've been in and around it, a part of it, my whole life, my whole adult life. And I think you'll see licensees get rid of their camera systems. I think the camera systems are a very good help to law enforcement and a very good help to the licensees. But if people think that because they destroyed a tape, no matter however it got destroyed, they could face criminal charges and/or lose their license, I think they'll throw the cameras out. A lot of them will. I don't think that's in the public interest. So that's another policy issue that I want you to think about. And again, that's speculation on my part, but it's based on 50 years of experience. I guess, in conclusion, again, I'd like you to really look at the body of work here that he has, the good record, the very successful business he has, and take a step back, allow us, first of all, allow these criminal matters to be resolved, allow the liquor commission's situation to be resolved, and then hopefully let us work with the liquor committee. Maybe we could come up with some issues to help solve this minor issue. Maybe we could create a new gold standard on that thing. I certainly volunteer myself to help with that. So does Mr. McMahon. So, again, the number one argument here is there's no rush. There shouldn't be a rush. There's no public safety issue at stake here, unlike many other cases you've done, where you've given people second chances and third chances. And I think the city's got a record of that. This, I think, is, and I understand how we get here. He's, this conduct is not admirable, so I understand why we're here. But at this point, I think, let's try to see if we couldn't rehabilitate that, we couldn't change that. I know his attitude has changed. You would never see him not allowing tape. He would bring the tape to the station himself if he had to do over again. So we would just ask you to put the brakes on the train for just a second, maybe place it on file, allow us to work with law enforcement, try to rehabilitate that situation, and then let the other cases play out. Because we can't, and next week, nothing will change. We can't have a fair hearing. We can't present evidence to you because we're hamstrung with the cloud of the legal investigation that the county attorney's office is, which is ongoing, as far as I know. With that, I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing to proponents, that are those that have come to testify in favor of the resolution, where the council will vote to set this for hearing. First proponent.
Hello. My name is Madison Riggle, and I'm an ex-employee from Chad McMahon. I worked at The Good Life on 180th and Pacific.
We need your address, please.
2324 North 189th Circle. I'm going to start off by saying, working there, we were forced to serve minors. We were told occasionally that, well, we would go to management and say, hey, I think this kid has a fake ID. We were told multiple times, we are not ID experts, and if they show a form of identification that says that they are 21, whether it looks fake or not, we were told to serve them. And the evidence that I have is on my phone. I don't have it printed out, but these are.
Well, here's how the system works. If you put it under the Elmo.
Under here.
And he'll turn it on, and then you can zoom in or out from on top.
Perfect.
There you go.
These are some messages from Chad McMahon that say, "To be clear, we want people drinking, obviously. Tell servers to learn, we are not ID experts. We're not out to find fakes. We card if ID isn't obviously fake and says 21. We serve. These will say under 21. Should be obvious." Now, in this text, he does say.
Ma'am?
Yes.
If, because of the way you presented that, it's not yet in the record. If you wish, you have to text that to the city clerk's office.
Okay.
So you can, after you testify, you can step over here and see how you can forward an email. But continue with your testimony.
Yeah. I went to high school at Elkhorn High School, and so I'm aware that a lot of kids do go there. Multiple times I've seen kids that are multiple years younger than I am drinking while I'm working. And I've walked up to my managers and told them, hey, I went to high school with these kids. I know that they're 17, 18 years old, with drinks in their hands, drinking. And they just told me if they showed them an ID, it doesn't matter. So, I'm going to leave it at that. I just know that I worked there. There were multiple occasions where we had proof that kids were underage drinking, and we were still told to serve them.
Okay. If you'd step over here, and they'll make arrangements how you can get your information into the record. Next proponent, that person's in favor of the resolution to hold a revocation hearing.
Good afternoon. Anthony Cato Jr., Omaha, Nebraska, 2596 Crown Point. The reason why this, I'm a proponent, there are two lawyers on the board, and you should be familiar with the dram shop issue. But if I look kind of familiar, there's a reason why I'm very much in favor of you taking this man's liquor license for a brief period of time. Number one, I'm the victim of an underage drinker who paralyzed me in 2007 for two and a half years. And under that law, the liquor establishment wasn't punished. It was Mustang Sally's. They were doing 120 miles an hour to hit me at 52nd and Ames. I've had 16 surgeries. I have to have 17. I have to have my left knee replaced. I know Mike Kelly. He's a very good man. I'm sure Mr. McMahon is a very good man. I also know that one of these investors is one of my alumni. When I played at the University of Nebraska, Chad Kelsey was playing at the University of Nebraska. But the bottom line is, the taxpayers are innocent victims, as well as the victims that these teens hit. And it costs you a great deal of money to take care of me to this very day. We cannot have an establishment taking money out of the pockets of citizens to make a buck. I struggle with this because I liked The Good Life. I've been here. They have excellent food. You have excellent food, sir. You've had excellent service there. But I also know you have kids there. I've seen them there. Taco Tuesday night, Saturday during football games, sometimes even during some of the basketball games for Creighton and Nebraska. But the bottom line is, how much money is it going to take to make you understand you've got to be a better steward of your business? It's not his fault that this service didn't do the right thing on Christmas Day. It's his fault because he didn't train them properly. It's his fault that those kids. It's his fault that they, those kids who had home training, tried to make a bad decision or a bad choice to go out and have a good time and think they could get away with it and party and drink. But there's a funny thing, we tried that once. It's called prohibition. How did that work out for us? It didn't, never has, and it never will. Drinking's always going to be a problem. It's the culture we know, it's the people we associate with. But the bottom line is, how much money is he going to lose? He's got one establishment? No, he's got four, about to open a fifth in Gretna. If you're talking about lost wages, what about all the wages you're losing to pay for my medical care? $4.9 million and counting, because I'm on disability. You, as a citizen of Nebraska, you, as a citizen of Omaha, pay for that. How much is he going to keep making if you let him have his liquor license for six months, 30 days? He won't understand, I've got to be a better steward of how I train my employees and expect them to act. And if I don't, either the state's going to get me under the dram shop rule, signed by Governor Dave Heineman, and I was there when he signed it, in a wheelchair, saying, we've got to be better stewards. That's all this is about. Mike Kelly has represented a lot of people that I know and helped work with him. Under similar issues, Mr. Gray has been present. He's been on the board for 12 years, he should know. It happens a lot in North Omaha. But the bottom line is, money, cost. Yes, he made a bad choice, and he could have been a better steward. And I don't believe you've ruined your reputation with these Omaha police officers. But if you don't make a difference now and set an example for every bar owner in the city, from Dundee, Old Market, Benson, North Omaha, South Omaha, Southwest Omaha, when will you do it? Because this is the time. Because I'm telling you, being on disability sucks. Having 16 surgeries, two titanium rods, 43 screws, going to a chiropractor, neurosurgeon, orthopedic surgeon every other day, or every other week, or every other month for years, is no life. All the king's horsemen, all the king's men can't bring me back together again. I'll never be able to play basketball again. I know that. I know it's going to come sometime, but I didn't want it to come that night when those 14ers who would drink at Mustang Sally's hit me. I remember the city attorney, Marty Carnboy, said, you know what? It's a damn shame that happened to you. I'm going to tell you this, it can happen to anybody sitting up there, any back here in the gallery. Pay attention, make him be, become a better steward. You punish him by saying, we're going to take some financial resiliency and make you lose your license. You're not going to lose your food license, you're going to be a better steward. You're going to be making better decisions, you're going to do better training. And maybe, what Mike Kelly suggested, we might be able to get some teenagers to pay attention and not go in and do some stupid stuff. We've all made bad choices, all of us, in our lifetime. This is not the time to relax those standards for everybody. You talked about it earlier in the mayor's resolution, equality and diversity and justice for all. Prove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard on this item?
Hello. My name is Sabrina McCarthy, 18305 Mason Street, Omaha. I once was an employee at Good Life from March 2019 to August 2019. My sister's name is Stephanie Gross, who is in a current lawsuit represented by Justin Hi at Hi &amp; Yuns. Because of her lawsuit, I am not able to speak freely on things that I have seen or heard. I can, however, say that the video evidence that was subpoenaed that night of her case also had gone missing after requested. Making this into a big thing that shouldn't have. My sister was in the accident that happened on the patio at Good Life, leaving her disfigured for the rest of her life last May. Again, making this into a big thing that shouldn't have. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll now move to opponents. Is there anyone wishing to testify in opposition to this resolution?
Brenda Vicario, 5402 Southern 91st Avenue. I started a year ago at The Good Life on 180th and Pacific. I'm currently the daytime manager at The Good Life in Papillion. I will say that I was that young lady's manager for a time when she did work at The Good Life. She does no longer work at The Good Life. I will say that as far as her testimony, it is false. I, as a manager, my other fellow managers, would never tell anyone to serve a minor. I have four kids of my own, I have a 13-year-old. We would never tell any child that worked for us, that's young, to serve any of their friends. We would never do that. On top of that, she was let go. I sent her home one morning. She was on drugs, and I sent her home, took over her tables, and she was not allowed back from that moment. I will also say that I was the other young lady's manager. She continued to work at The Good Life for many months after her sister's case. She only left because she found a better opportunity. She left on very good terms. I will say that The Good Life prides itself on being one of the best in its class. To achieve this, each of us individually, as managers and servers, we withhold high standards, we expect our servers to hold these same standards. That includes making sure that we follow the rules set by Chad, the laws of the city, and the health department, et cetera. We, as managers, send out constant reminders, in the same group chat that she showed, to remind our bartenders and our servers that we card everyone. That is our policy. If they have any questions, we tell them, you come get a manager, and we will take it over from there. I've never witnessed anyone at any of our locations not following that protocol. They're reminded all the time, in person and in the group chat. We have in the past and present had this policy, and will continue to have this policy in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents wishing to testify?
My name's Alex Newman, sorry, I'm kind of sick. 9123 Meadow Drive. I've been a server at The Good Life at the 180th Pacific location since August. Worked my way up to one of the head servers, I do all the training with all them now, too. Ever since I've started, we've always IDed, always carded everyone. If I've ever had an ID that looked kind of suspicious and I wasn't sure, I've grabbed a manager, they've come to the table, re-IDed everyone at the table. We've had countless group chats, talking about how to properly ID people, that if we do have any questions, we are more than welcome to come into management. We've been shown ways to be able to spot fake IDs. I've worked with many people throughout the time, just because serving is such a high turnover rate. Obviously, some servers are a lot better at their job than others, and some servers take it a little bit more seriously as well. As of lately, too, we've been double-carding tables. So, someone comes up to the bar, and then they sit at a table. We're going to ID them again, even if they sat at the table and already have a drink in their hand. We've been doing this for months. We've always prided ourselves on it and been very good at it. Just because there has been something that's happened in the past that was done by a not-great server shouldn't mean that we all lose our liquor license or jobs. It's a very great place to work at. I know there's rumors and stuff going around, but it's, we've always done a great job there. And Chad's always been good about sending text messages in the group chat, telling us what we need to work on, things we need to do, what we need to pride ourselves in. And with the ID thing going forward, like, we've double-checked even other servers' tables. So if I have someone who has been drinking at another table, and they come to my table, I'm IDing them just because I personally haven't served them yet. And that's how we've all been working. So, I just wanted to put that out there and say that that's how we've been doing it.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents wishing to testify?
Hi, Kimberly Osborne, 1137 West 6th Street, Papillion. I am currently the general manager of the location, The Good Life Sports Bar Grill in Papillion. I'm going to make this short and sweet. I've worked for Chad McMahon for six years. Of those six years, I've been managing for him for five and a half of those years. General manager for the last four and a half of those years. Been doing this for 14 years, running restaurants, running bars. We do not and have not ever supported serving any minor. We have scheduled meetings, we threw it in group chat every day, I just, every single day. If I find out that any of you ever want to serve a minor, you will be immediately fired. We will not put up with it. It is not worth it for me, it is not worth it for him, it is not worth it for any of the managers that we work with. We do not support it, we will not support it. We don't benefit from it. Why would we want them to come in? We don't want that. We want families, we want older, we want people in their 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s. We don't want the 21-year-olds, the under-21-year-olds. We don't benefit from serving anyone underage. We ID anyone that looks under the age of 40. I am very passionate about my job. I make sure myself and as well as my employees are going above and beyond to do our jobs at the best of our ability, that includes making sure we are not serving anyone underage. I've worked for Chad McMahon. I'm going to tell you, he's a great guy. He is very, very well-known, everybody knows who he is. Nine years. He is, if not the busiest bar in Omaha. He knows what he's doing. Why would he put his business at stake to allow to serve an underage? Yes, we are not ID experts. I have 65 staff members currently working for me. Of the three, almost three years we've been in Papillion, I've had 65. Those age range between 19 and 23 years old. These are servers that are 19 years old to 23 years old. Yes, you have to teach them, yes, you have to constantly stay on them. We give them training, we teach them, we tell them what to look for. If they are not comfortable, grab me. I've been doing this for 14 years. Preston's another manager, grab him, he's been doing this for 12 years. Brenda, she's been in the industry. We don't allow it, and I don't think it's fair to say that we are willingly allow this to happen. We don't benefit from it. Chad is a stand-up guy, he takes care of us, he makes sure we're taken care of. If we ever need anything, we call Chad. Hey, yes, we, we have a lot of employees, we have three locations plus the other location that's a little bit smaller. Why would we want to impact any of us? You know, we make amazing money, these servers, they, this is their livelihood. This is my livelihood. I've put six years of my life to this man to make sure these businesses are running the way that they're supposed to run. I would never, ever want to jeopardize that by allowing a server or a bartender or anyone to under, serve anyone underage, ever. Yeah, been with him for six years. Just, it's not, it's not what we do, it's not what we promote, we do not do it. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents?
Molly Renneke, 16430 Lilac Street. I ask Kim and one of Chad's managers, I've been a general manager for him for two years. I've been with him for four, three of which I've been a manager, to echo their comments. Chad would do anything for any of us. He looks at us as family, our kids as family. My son actually works for me at one of Chad's locations. So, again, to echo their comments, serving minors is not something that would ever benefit any of us and nor anything as a mom of teenagers that I would ever want to run a business as any part of doing. We do receive messages from Chad every day, we train our staff every day. Chad has high expectations of how to run his business, as do we as managers. That's how we choose to run our business with high expectations. And with that, along with the quality of the business that we run, the high level of fast-paced business that we run goes along with doing things the right way. And with that includes not serving of minors. It is something that, as Kim has said, if they have any questions, if they are unsure of, they need to come to one of us. I used to run bank branches, I'm very familiar with how difficult it can be to be sure of if an ID is valid or invalid, fake or not fake. But that's what we have to, as managers, teach them. Again, the average age of our servers is probably less than 25 years old. So, for many of them, this is their first job. There's hundreds of people that work for The Good Life, that this is their livelihood. As Chad's attorney mentioned, I don't think that taking away the liquor license so quickly is maybe in the best for any of the employees of The Good Life, who put everything we are into that place every day to provide a great place for the community, so that we can continue to give back to the community, which we do lots of every year. But for me personally, I can say Chad would do anything for me. So, I'm here today, away from running his businesses, so that I can help you guys see the importance of what this place actually means to all of us who put our everything into it on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Dave Schillinglaw. I'm the, I'm the marketing and brand manager for The Good Life Sports Bars and Grill. I've been working for The Good Life full-time since 2018, and for three years prior to that, as their social media manager. I retired from teaching in 2018 after 29 years as a public school teacher with Bellevue Public Schools. One of the things that I've found out after working on a daily basis with our managers is that we're more than a sports bar. I mean, we're part of the communities that we're in. And the last thing we would ever do is to serve to a minor, purposely or unpurposely. It just doesn't happen, it's not part of our karma, we don't do it. This instance, obviously underage drinkers got served. I'd like to tell you a few things that we do in the community that mean a lot to us. In Papillion, we created an outstanding teacher recognition program, where they selected an outstanding elementary teacher every month, and Mr. McMahon, and Kim, our general manager, and Molly, and our former spoke, and our current spokesperson, Chris Kelsey, former Husker. We'd show up unannounced to a teacher's room, make a presentation, give the kids a bunch of swag, and make that teacher's day. We've been doing that for three years in Papillion now. Just about a month or so ago, Chad has a, I think, a cousin named Ben, who came down with a rare form of cancer, he's an Omaha Scott student. And out of the goodness of his heart, he decided he was going to donate 1,500 T-shirts to Ben Strong. You might have seen John Nicely's story on WOWT that he did on this. So when Ben came to school after his first chemotherapy treatment, there we were, 1,000 strong, every kid in the building with a Ben Strong T-shirt on. He didn't have to do that, he did it because he wanted to, and he wanted to help the kids. I can't tell you how many things we do every day that help Millard, Papillion, Creighton Prep, public schools ask, we're there to help. Last fall, with the help of Chad's friend Lance Jewett from Farmers Insurance, we hosted a golf event for 144 first responders, and we worked hand-in-hand with the Omaha First Responders Foundation, a group I'm sure you're all familiar with. All the participants received complimentary golf and lunch, and then they got gifts and prizes afterwards at Shadow Ridge Country Club. There was no cost to those first responders to do that. Lance and Chad picked up the tab for that, and we did it because we appreciate what they do to protect us. This was a reward for all the work they'd done during the pandemic. And it's ironic that the officer who is spearheading this investigation played in our event last year. We sponsor youth and kids programs at Millard Public Schools, Elkhorn, Papillion, Omaha Scott, Omaha Roncolli, Gretna, and that includes baseball, softball, volleyball, cheerleaders, dance teams, musical arts programs. We do it because we believe it's important to give back to the communities who support us. It's not a show, it's not a show. I do these things with his okay, because that's how we do things, that's how we run our business. To say that our general managers were complicit in any of this is just 100% wrong. Didn't happen. I wanted to read you a few reviews that we've got just in the last week from people that have come to The Good Life. Awesome food, awesome atmosphere, perfect for the whole family. We go here a lot, and we love the Buffalo Chicken Pizza. Solid place, busy though. Fantastic location with great food. The patio on nice days is fun and situated between the Good Life OG and the Good Life Lounge. And these, by the way, were the last five reviews. I didn't, I didn't cut out any of the one stars, or the two stars, or the three stars. These are them, these are the last five we got. And this one I really like. We've been trying, we've been wanting to try The Good Life since it's quite the buzz in Omaha. We weren't disappointed with our experience. We showed up a little after 6:00 PM on a Saturday, and it was packed. We lucked out, found a high top to sit in, and immediately after we sat down, the waitress came up with menus. We ordered some drinks that were ready within minutes. Same, same with our appetizers, cheese curds, and, by the way, they were delicious. The food came fast as well, and our waitress frequently came back to check on us. Both the food and service were excellent, especially for being so packed. We highly recommend this place if you're looking for a sports bar environment. In closing, I've worked with our general managers, Kim and Molly and Dan, who's not here, on a daily basis for over three years. These people are professionals. They're the only general managers we've ever had at those locations. And as you may know, in the bar business, there's a huge turnover, and it's pretty common. They haven't left. There's a reason for that, it's because we do things right. The only way, and we are vigilant about IDs. When I hear people say that, that we... The only way, and we are vigilant about IDs, when I hear people say that, that we okayed underage drinking and they took it to a manager, that's purely, that is, that is 100% false. There just isn't any way that could happen. The only way an underage person could ever get served in our restaurant is to have a fake ID, or the server knew them and knew they were underage, when they served them anyway. The server, in this case, is a 21-year-old female who will tell you that she checked their IDs. It's her word against an underage drinker who had written on his Facebook page earlier on Christmas Day, I quote, "Unpopular opinion, blank Christmas." And that word starts with an F. Then he had a bunch of his friends chime in on that post to ask him if he was okay and what was going on, and so on and so forth. Well, later that night, he made the decision to sneak into a bar with his friends on Christmas Day, and then he crashed his car going almost 100 miles an hour. In closing, we are a family-friendly restaurant and a community supporter. Our staff works hard every day to provide a fantastic experience for our guests. We didn't take any shortcuts to get where we're at, we earned it. I ask you on behalf of our 225 employees who depend on their jobs to support their families, to take everything you've heard today into consideration when you make your decision. I want to thank you for your time today. I, I've never been to a city council meeting, and, and I appreciate all you do for us. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, Mr. Weeson, do you have a minute or two of rebuttal?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, now at this time.
Okay, the public hearing is closed, we'll open this up to council members now. Councilmember Brennan, you're recognized.
Yeah. Mr. Kelly, you had said that this was a first offense, correct?
Mike Kelly, for the record, yes.
Okay.
At this location, yes.
Okay, at this location.
Yes.
So, there had been offenses at other locations?
There has been one at the, in the Papillion location, a failed compliance check about two-years ago.
Okay. I'm wondering how many offenses it takes for someone to get into a car accident and potentially die?
I'm pardon, how many offenses?
Yeah, how many, how many, how many offenses does it take for a minor to get into a car accident?
Oh, no, it's terrible, I mean, it's awful, awful, we're not, nobody's poo-pooing that, that's.
No, it's horrible.
Fact that they were served is a very bad situation.
Correct.
That's why I talked about, I'd like to work with people to try to work on this epidemic. A lot of people, 18, 19, 20, don't believe in the current law, and they violate it willfully all the time. That, we need to work toward changing that.
Without, without question, that, that, you know, there is, there is fault on, on the part of the, the minor who went into the bar. But he's a minor. And, and that's all I have for you, sirs. But I keep hearing, I keep hearing from people who are opponents of the hearing, "We don't serve to minors, that just doesn't happen, we do things right." I'm sorry, but clearly, that is not the case. I have, I have kids in college, and I was pretty horrified when I heard about this, this happening so close to my district, and this, this just absolutely cannot happen. We, we can't allow this to happen again. So, those are, those are my remarks for today, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I agree, these are very serious charges and infractions, and I thought Mr. Weeson gave a thorough, a presentation of why it is concerning. I'm not on the liquor commi, on the liquor committee, so I feel like I might be catching up here on some facts, and I feel like there's a lot to unpack here, so Mr. Weeson, if I could have you approach. Your name?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you. So, there doesn't seem to be anyone contesting there was a sale to a minor in this instance. Can you tell me, and I know we take that very seriously here at the city council, for example, someone who might be applying for a new license, if they can't demonstrate they have corrected that situation, or have gone through some conditions like training their staff, and haven't had a second offense, it's pretty unlikely they would get a license. Tell me, in a case like this, with a current licensed owner, when there is a sale to a minor, and when that is proven to be true, what would be a typical punishment or a censure in that case? From the city?
From the city, generally, it would be referred to the Liquor Control Commission. And if we're only, only detailing a sale to a minor, let's say, a minor, they were doing compliance checks and a minor went into a convenience store and purchased a can of beer, and that was it, there were no other extenuating factors, no other allegations of wrongdoing, or extenuating circumstances that would heighten the severity of the incident. Typically, the commission would impose likely a fine or a small suspension in that case, but that's different than the facts that we have presented here.
And so, that might, that, that would typically go straight to the Liquor Commission and could include a fine or even temporary suspension, right?
That's correct.
Or even, even revocation?
In theory, it could. I do not know if it would be likely for the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to impose revocation if the only allegation was just a simple sale to a minor without any other allegations or extenuating circumstances on top of it. But in theory, state statute in case law does allow them to do that.
Okay. And then, the applicant's representation, I think accurately then suggests that this is a bit unusual to be at this stage before the city council with this resolution, just based on a sale to a minor, but I think what you're saying is, we're at this point, not just because of that, but because of the, the charges around potential obstruction of justice, is that accurate to say?
I, I think that would be accurate. The criminal process can take months, sometimes years, and the question now is, how long do we want to allow the license to operate with these allegations? The Liquor Control Act states that classes of whom no license, classes of persons who no license shall be issued is under 53-125, and it includes a person who is not of good character or reputation in the community in which he or she resides. The Nebraska Supreme Court interpreted that provision in a case in 1973, and with respect to the phrase "not of good character," they said that the phrase "not of good character" concerning eligibility for a license under the Nebraska Liquor Control Act imports lack of good faith or honesty of purpose. And so, the question here is, was there good faith, was there honesty of purpose in Mr. McMahon's actions? And I think the evidence in the reports indicates an attempt to interfere and impede and obstruct an investigation, and an attempt to possibly destroy evidence as well.
Okay.
Evidence related to a liquor violation.
Okay. And so, that's why we're at this point here today, and if this resolution was approved, it leads to, as you say, this doesn't revoke the license, it leads to an evidentiary hearing that would happen presumably next week.
That's correct.
And even if that was approved, that still goes to the Liquor Commission, and they're the ultimate, ultimate arbitrators of what would occur.
That's correct. If the council were to vote to revoke the license, that revocation would be subject to appeal to the Liquor Control Commission. The Liquor Control Commission would then, if an appeal was taken, the Liquor Control Commission would determine the issue, and then the license holder could seek further review from the District Court Lancaster County, the Nebraska Court of Appeals, and the Nebraska Supreme Court, assuming that all those steps were followed.
And having dealt with some of these before, that can take months, in my experience.
That's true.
So then, tell me about this parallel track, and the notion of, well, what if we didn't have that hearing yet, and what if they allowed the other, the other, I guess, parallel tracks of this issue to play out, which sounds like are before the Douglas County Attorney in terms of potential criminal charges, and/or the Liquor Commission proceedings that are, that have been noted for July?
That's correct. The council could take no action on this resolution at that time. It wouldn't necessarily preclude the council from taking action at a future time, but as the passage of time keeps growing, it gets harder and harder to make the case that the license holder, that this is an important action to take, and if the person is of good character or fitness, if they are essentially able to continue going without further violations. Essentially, you would be punting to the Douglas County Attorney's Office or the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. If the license holder is convicted of a felony, either in Surphie County, or if charges are eventually brought in Douglas County, then persons convicted of felonies in Nebraska are automatically ineligible for liquor control licenses, and so the license would be revoked. Additionally, you could wait and see what the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission does and what sanctions they impose.
And that was one of the points I was driving towards with that line of question, is that if, if one was found guilty and one had a felony, that's it, no more liquor license, right?
That is correct.
Do we have any idea the timing of the Douglas County Attorney's process?
I do not have knowledge on that.
And then, maybe one last question for now, and I see others have the lights on. This, it's been noted that the, the business has four locations, like maybe a fifth that might be opening soon. This proceeding and potential revocation only apply, and even if there was a felony involved, only applies to this location?
Yes and no. The hearing in front of the council is under the jurisdiction of the location in the city of Omaha, within the city limits. If the council were to revoke the liquor license for that location, one of the classes of people who are prohibited from holding liquor licenses in the state of Nebraska pursuant to statute are people who have had a liquor license revoked. So, if the council revokes the license for this location, Mr. McMahon becomes a prohibited license holder under Nebraska law, and he loses all of his other licenses. If the council were to vote to cancel the liquor license for this location, the, this location within the jurisdiction of the city of Omaha shuts down, he loses the liquor license, but Mr. McMahon does not become a prohibited person and can continue operating outside of the city of Omaha, at his other locations.
So, that's a long way of saying it could temporarily close this location, but unlikely to close other locations if others had that liquor license in their name.
I'm, I'm not sure I follow, if...
So, if, if all these things came to pass, as you described, Mr. McMahon would be prevented from having a liquor license in his name, or he couldn't be the manager of the liquor license, and that would certainly impact this location with these charges, but not necessarily the, the other ones if there were other managers.
If the council were to vote to revoke the liquor license, and that revocation would be upheld, Mr. McMahon would be prohibited from holding other liquor licenses in the state of Nebraska, and would have to either shut down operations at his other locations, or they would have to be transferred or sold to an individual who is not affiliated with Mr. McMahon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And, right, don't, don't, don't go anywhere, hold on one second. Because I, and I just want to say first that I, I find the actions, I understand selling to minors is problematic. I'm, I'm not sure what information we have at, at this point, we have information that it, it did happen. But I do know that that happens, and we have worked with other bar owners to make other things happen, to prevent that from happening again, prevent their servers from selling to minors. What I find the most disturbing, it's the, it's not giving over the, the evidence, not giving over the, the tapes and the actions. However, that hasn't been charged, and I want to say that I, I have a lot of faith and trust in both our county attorney and our city prosecutor, depending on whether it be a felony or a misdemeanor, I would actually like to give them time to review and make the determination what, if any, charges should be filed, as opposed to us make that decision preemptively, and then try and tell our county attorney what we believe should be done, because I don't think that that's our role, and that's me as a former prosecutor, I'm not anymore, and so I think that role should be filled by our county attorney and our city prosecutor. But at this point, if we're just asking for a revocation, I liked what Mr. Cato had said. Mr. Cato wasn't exactly down here saying, "I want all the locations to close down permanently" and everything else, he kind of mentioned the suspension. You know, what they did maybe was wrong, and I would like to see something more than just a fine, but that's not something the city council can do, is it, Ryan?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney. There's a state statute, it is Nebraska revised statute 53-134 that sets forth the powers of the local governing body, the local governing body in this case being the city council. In that statute, in that section of that statute, it talks about cancellation and revocation. I haven't been able to locate the word "suspension" in that section. However, there are also provisions of the Omaha Municipal Code that do talk about the city of Omaha's ability to suspend a license. At this point, I've been unable to find a mere section talking about suspension by a city council or a local governing body in state statute. If you would like, I continue to do research on that issue and see if that is a possibility, but at least at this, at this point, it's my understanding that the council, the options before the council would be to cancel or revoke the license.
Okay, because I, you know, and I think what I heard Mr. Kelly saying too, if you do this now, which you may, and we may have the evidence needed to meet the burden for a civil matter to do this, from, you gave a great presentation, and I want, I want to say thank you. But also, what I want to make sure is, what are our options? If we set this hearing for revocation, can the council say, you know, "What, we think what he did was really bad, but we don't think that we necessarily want to shut down, or potentially shut down, five locations, cost 65 people their jobs, cost managers that are counting on this, is this enough to where we want to literally cost all those people and everybody their jobs, because potentially, Mr. McMahon did something that we thought merited, something more than a fine?"
And that ultimately is...
And if we don't have that, I'm sorry, Ryan, but if you're telling me that if I say yes today and we set a hearing next week, that our only option is either revoke or not revoke, and we don't have the ability to do something in between, is that right?
You may be able to cancel, or you could amend the resolution, there could be a floor amendment to say that the council will consider cancellation or revocation at next week's hearing.
But the cancellation is necessarily a suspension?
Correct, a cancellation would not be a suspension, it would cancel the liquor license at this location in Omaha, Nebraska.
So, I guess, what, I guess what I'm thinking is, based upon what, what I see, and what our options are, what I would like to do is do some more legal research with you to see maybe what our options are, and also, you said this is going to go down to the Liquor Commission, so the Liquor Commission could very well suspend, the county attorney could file additional charges. I'm just wondering if it's a little premature for the city council to hear this next week, when I may want to see what other options we have, or amend the resolution to include something that may be a suspension, I'm just not sure if we're ready to do that in the next seven days.
And ultimately, that is up to the discretion of you and the other six members of the city council to make that decision.
And so, if we wanted to just, the other, the one thing I don't want to do is vote no today, because this isn't about whether we want to have this hearing or not, I think it's a matter of timing. And if we were to vote yes today, we're required by law to have the hearing within 10-days, is that right?
That is correct.
So, I mean...
Yes.
We can't say, "Well, let's, let's schedule the hearing for two weeks so that maybe you and I have time to maybe research this a little more, amend the resolution, and use the correct wording, and do it right." So, what are my options if I just really want to postpone making this decision? It's either a layover, or we place on file, but if we place on file, it just means we can bring it back?
That is my understanding of those options at this time.
And we could bring it back at any time, I mean, as long as we, we could, one, one council member could bring it back, as long as we notify the clerk by Thursday before the Tuesday meeting, is that right? What's the process of bringing it back if we place it on file?
I believe that's, the process is set forth in the local rules, but I'll defer to the parliamentarian of the city clerk.
Yep, so, we would have to be notified the Thursday, or before the Thursday when the agenda is published, but yes, it would just start the process over again, and the item would be placed on the agenda, and then the hearing would be set, yep.
Or we could actually draft a new resolution if we wanted to use different language, same process as we do any other resolution, is that right?
That is also correct.
Okay, no, there's no difference, sorry, I know I'm asking both of you. But also, I think I know, but I also want the public to know, and I want people to know today, if we decide to place it on file, sometimes we place things on file because we're just not going to ever look at them again. This is a different place on file, this is basically a layover that doesn't have a specific end date, because we're not sure how long it's going to take to get in front of the Liquor Commission, and for the potential prosecutors to determine what charges may or may not be filed. So, the best thing to do if we don't have a date is to place on file so we can determine and choose our own date in the future? Would you say that's fair to say, Ryan?
I don't know if I'd characterize it as the best, but it is certainly an option, to either continue this hearing to a date certain, whether it be a month, or two months, or three months, or to place it on file, which is essentially an indefinite placement until one of the council members requests to pull it back onto an agenda.
And do you know when this is going to go to the Liquor Commission?
I do not.
Because the other thing we could do is a 60-day layover, just sometimes, sometimes all of a sudden they pop up and we're not aware of them, and we don't know what, what happened, I almost would rather get notification from the Liquor Commission, find out what happens with the prosecutors, and then you let us know, so that then we can put this back on our agenda, if we determine that we're not satisfied with maybe what the Liquor Commission has done.
I don't believe that there is a process in place for the Liquor Commission to notify me or the city when these things are placed on an agenda, if there's not an affirmative action... action of the local governing body to send it down there. I think they just adjudicate the matter on their own, and it would be us to go on to their website.
But I'm fairly certain if we called Mr. Rup, that he would probably call us if we asked him to.
I'm sure that would be-
And I bet Mr. Kelly would actually notify us as soon as he came back to let us know what the Liquor Commission did, correct, Mr. Kelly? For the record, I'm going to note that you're shaking your head yes. Okay. I, I mean, because I do think that those things are, are important, but when it goes to Liquor Commission, what's the Liquor Commission actually reviewing? If they're not going to be on the revocation, are they just reviewing the sale to a liquor minor?
It would depend upon what the Nebraska State Patrol investigators present to them. They may only present to them the issues of the sale to a minor. They could present issues related to the ability of law enforcement to fully inspect the premises, fully inspect the premises being the video recording equipment, and whether or not there are additional violations of law that affect the license holders' character and fitness. Again, ultimately, it's up for what the investigators, the head of the commission, Mr. Rup, presents to the, the commission as a charge, and I don't have any involvement into that.
But don't, like, don't the Omaha Police Officers, I mean, they have a working relationship, especially with a case like this where Omaha Police investigated, couldn't our office, investigating officers contact Nebraska State Patrol to make sure that they know that there's additional issues in the case?
I believe that there would be an ability for our officers to contact the Nebraska State Patrol, but again, there's no way for us to force charges to be brought out to the commission that I'm aware of, or to place specific charges on an agenda absent the process set forth in statute of the local governing body taking action against the license, such as a cancellation or revocation, and then that being appealed to the commission.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. So if in July, the Nebraska State Patrol doesn't present in any of the evidence, or enough evidence, or maybe the evidence that our police officers have, and then just nothing happens at the Liquor Control in July, this council can immediately following, bring it back up and have this revi, we can bring it back up, vote and have this revocation hearing. Then it'll get sent back down.
That would be true if it, if the revocation was approved, and if that revocation is appealed to the commission.
Correct. So we could do that in July if-
I believe so.
If we don't find that maybe what happens in the July hearing is satisfactory to the citizens of Omaha, basically.
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. A minute ago, I, I talked to the president about some of these same issues, and I had questions about what, what our, what our authority is, or what, what we could invest, not investigate, but what we could impose, whether it be cancellation, revocation, suspension. And I think that was kind of some of the line of questioning that Councilmember Melton just had with, with Mr. Weason. And it, it seems to me that, I think we heard that there's still some question as to really what our authority is, or what we can do. I too was interested in if, if we could even suggest to the Liquor Commission suspension, or I think, I think some of the, the responses from Mr. Weason, and, and when I talked with the council president about, was we aren't quite sure of what authority maybe we have in making those suggestions. And it seems to me that if we're going to set a revocation hearing, or if we vote to do that, we have to do that within 10 days, or we have that next Tuesday, and we'd be voting on making an action that we don't even know what our options are, which I have a problem with. Do I think there should be a hearing on this? Absolutely. There is no question there should be a hearing on this. With all the, but I don't want to get into, I know this is a lower standard than, than court of law for criminal proceedings. And I wholly think that those, and I, I hope the, I know the county is looking at that very seriously, and I, I think it would be in our best interest maybe to let some of those issues play out, see what the Liquor Commission does. And I was going to ask the same question here, is that regardless of what the Liquor Commission may do in July, if that is in fact when they take this up, we still have the ability to take further action past that based upon the evidence that's been presented here today, or what, what may or may not come out of any criminal proceedings. So, look, serving to underage people is, is obviously unacceptable. But we have, you know, there are instances, as, you know, we've all seen, where we have worked with those establishments to be better at doing their job if, if there's that lapse. I certainly hope this is not a, I, I hope it's, it's a one-off, and it's not something that happens with any degree of frequency, because if it does happen with any degree of frequency, I have no sympathy for you, Mr. McMahon, in your business. And I, I feel for the 250 employees system-wide, but you're the one putting their livelihoods in jeopardy. So when this comes back to us, if it's laid over today, and after any, any criminal proceedings are, are resolved, and whatever happens at the Liquor Commission, I will have no sympathy for you. And I feel very sorry for the families who rely on the incomes of those people working in your establishments, but no sympathy.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, I would echo what I just heard from both my colleagues, Harding and Melton, exactly. And the biggest problem I have as well is if by law we have to set this up for a hearing within 10 days, and, and we've already heard that we have parties that we would ask, like Mr. McMahon, questions, and he's not able to answer them due to pending legal ramifications that could happen, we can't actually make a good decision on this, and we're certainly not taking it lightly. We've had some good testimony on both sides. I talk with my colleagues a lot, I'm not sure if any of them have ever been in the bar business, but I have, so I've served on customers during college, and, you know, I've, I know we heard from both sides that we don't serve minors, but I've been there. And maybe you don't serve minors, and maybe that's not what you tell your employees to do, but in this particular case, minors were actually served, and they were served by somebody, according to the police report, that either had a relationship or lived with these people. So it does happen. And if you have 220 employees, and they can serve six people at a time that are minors, do the math of how many minors could be driving home intoxicated. So it does happen. But again, for us, and I, and I don't know if anybody's made a motion to put this on file, but if not, I will make that motion, because I think that's where it needs to go, to be able to bring it back, to be able to make sure the Liquor Control Commission does their job, and if not, then we will be able to do our job, because we do take this serious. And I, I appreciate the testimony again. I pulled up something, because this is why we love internet, and I, I looked up the website for The Good Life, and it's a really good website. Of course, I won't be able to get it up again, but it shows the food, and it shows the selections, and the former teacher who's in charge of that now. And then it goes to the bar, and it says something for everyone. Well, maybe after today, in parentheses, it'll say something for everyone over 21. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. You know, I sit on the Liquor Committee with Vice President Palermo and Councilmember Brennan, and when, when the police presented the initial reports to the committee, it was rather alarming what we were hearing, and not only because of the tragic events, the serious injuries, which now do fit within the exception of the drab shop law for liquor, liquor license holders. If you serve to a minor, then there is drab shop if, if that, there's injury. But the old saying, "It's not the crime, it's the cover-up," that always gets you. And I couldn't help but be impressed by Mr. Weason, and I know Mr. Weason's mother, and how proud she would be of you and your, your work, it was so professional and thorough, taking us through this evidence, and watching it, running through my mind was wondering, we have unresolved questions in terms of the court system and criminal courts, and the process here, although rather firm in terms of the evidentiary support for your presentation, it would be better, I think, as I sit here, having been one who came in here thinking if I heard what I was going to hear at the committee, I'd probably vote to hold the hearing and revoke, but I think as I hear Mr. Kelly says, well, he's handcuffed as a lawyer to present until the criminal cases get further along, and then wondering, well, what's going to happen on this? Will there be destruction of evidence, witness tampering, or obstruction of justice charges? And is it all felony potential with the county attorney? We have Mr. Weason's boss, who's the city prosecutor sitting right behind us, acting city attorney, and I wonder what was going through his mind, and whether he intends to charge under a misdemeanor. And if that's the case, we probably ought to wait and see what happens there before we do anything, as you say, Councilmember Harding, and Melton, and Vice President Palermo. So, Mr. Cousy, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you heard the presentation and wondered what your intentions are, if you're prepared to share them today.
Matt Cousy, interim city attorney. I've had this conversation with the Omaha Police Department, and it is my intention that Mr. McMahon is going to be charged based on the video incident with obstruction. I can't speak for what the county attorney may or may not do.
Okay. And so, basically, we now know that obstruction of justice charges are imminent, and that's, that's a process that it makes sense to me, and probably to Mr. Cousy, to his prosecutorial team, to allow it to run its course before we take action, because here's why, as I see it. I thought we were going to come here today and have either Mr. Farrar, the IT guy, or someone say, "Well, I was asked to delete the video." We don't have that, and we heard why. He's, he's got a lawyer now, and, but allowing Mr. Cousy to have his office run the gamut of the prosecutorial efforts of obstruction, whether against Mr. McMahon, or Mr. Farrar, or anyone else, Mr. McMahon or whoever's charged will have their presumption of innocence unless and until proven guilty, but the city prosecutor process is a rather efficient prosecution to disposition, and it will allow the council relatively soon, and the city who are listening to us and watching and so attuned to this case, to have an answer sooner rather than later. Regardless of what happens in Lincoln, I've got news for everyone here. If, if all that the commission is considering at its July hearing is a serve to a minor with a legal rules enforcement process that is called progressive discipline, I don't see that they're going to be revoking any licenses based on a one-time sale to a minor, although it may be enhanced penalties because of the injury to a minor, we'll see. And so I would prefer, and even though I won't be here when it comes, comes back, you all will then have the benefit of the results of, of at least the city prosecutor's prosecution. So I would support the motion to place on file, because it allows the council to bring it back at any time, whereas if we lay it over to a date certain, then we're, the hands of the council are tied in that, in that regard. So, Mr. Cousy, you, you heard what I had to say. Do you, do you believe that your prosecutorial efforts would be best served to have us just sit back for a little while to let your office do its thing?
No, I think they're independent of each other. I don't think the prosecution of Mr. McMahon for a misdemeanor or a felony would in any way affect the administrative aspect of things that we're talking about.
All right. And I respect that opinion. I respectfully disagree for the reasons that Mr. Kelly said. If, if you want to know what happened, then, you know, he's got to be able to do his job, and he wants to present witnesses and things, and I think people are going to be reluctant to come testify here and be recorded, and then worry about what's going to happen next door in the courthouse as to what they testify or what they're cross-examined on. So I think knowing how his office goes about their work and, and the timeline from charging to disposition that normally happens, at least before COVID, I'm comfortable with placing it on file. So, Councilmember Festerson, I see your lights on.
Thanks, Mr. President. And I understand that, that logic, and I think there is some benefit in terms of process to that, and to having more information before we make a decision. To me, that does make some sense, even though it causes me some mixed emotions. My, my only thought is, I think there's been a motion to, to place on file, there hasn't been a second yet, but it appears that's the will of the body at this point. My only thought is, I would prefer a date certain, only because I don't like the message that on file sends, even though it might give us flexibility to bring it back whenever. I think a date certain sends a message that this isn't over, and we're monitoring this very closely, and if we don't have the additional information we need by that timeframe, we could always lay it over again. But I don't think this should just be off the agenda, this should stay on our agenda. If that's something a, a motion considerer might, might be willing to suggest, I might be more comfortable with that, whether that's 30 days or what have you.
Yeah, the, if you were looking for my thoughts in response to that, I, I would refer to Mr. Cousy in terms of if this would be a jury trial in the timeline for that versus non-jury trial, but I think that it would, under the speedy trial, it'd have to go to six months to have it disposed, unless there were waivers, but, Mr. Cousy, what's the timeline, and would this be jury or non-jury?
Matt Cousy, interim city attorney. The process would be, assuming that there is not a felony charged, is that he would get a citation, in two months would be his arraignment date, a month after that would be his pre-trial date, a month after that would be his trial date, assuming that there are no continuances in between then. Then there would be a trial. If Mr. McMahon was convicted, he could appeal that decision to the district court. If he loses in the district court, he could appeal that to the Court of Appeals and/or the Nebraska Supreme Court. So it could be four or five months, it could be a year.
Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
You know, Ryan, Councilmember Festerson, this may help. I don't necessarily think that we need to wait until the entire criminal case is completely over, but right now, we don't, we understand that it looks like the city may charge a misdemeanor charge. We still don't know what the county may or may not do. So I guess where I'm at is, I'm not looking to postpone, place this on file so that maybe a year from now we bring it back up. I think we just give a little time and get some more information as, to some of the other people, and may, there may be some other things that I don't even really want to discuss, because in terms of when you're prosecuting, and maybe what some of the options are in, in negotiations, but what I would like to do is place it on file so that we can bring it up in two to, I mean, I'm talking two to three months. I just, if you were going to lay it over, I'd lay it over for a minimum of, of 60 days to maybe 90 days.
To place on.
But it may be better if we placed it on file so that we have complete control of when we bring it back up. If we want to bring it back up in 30 days, we actually can. If something happens at one of the Good Life restaurants that we hear about, and other tavern reports made, the police notify the law committee, we can move to bring this up the week after it happens. I mean, I think placing on file maybe gives us just a little more flexibility to bring it up even sooner. But I guess that's, that's just kind of my thought. I, and I, because when I said to wait and place it on file, it was not meaning to wait until the entire potential case is over, but just to get a little more information.
The city clerk advises, the current motion without a second is to place on file without a bring-back date. There is an option, if that, if the mover were to amend, to place it on file with a date to bring it back. The choice is at the discretion of the council. The choice is at the discretion of the council, but the present motion, not second, it is just to simply place it on file.
So, we can have a date but still bring it up sooner?
No, that would be a motion to lay over. They're two separate things. One is to place on file, the other would be to postpone or lay over.
Okay.
If we make a motion to place on file with the date certain, isn't that just laying it over to?
That's a layover.
Yeah, so, okay.
All right, thank you. Vice President Palermo, your light's on.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And Councilmember Festerson, you're exactly right. My first thought was to lay it over and give an exact date. And even if we had to backtrack and not have all the information, we could take it out from there. But honestly, look around, the law enforcement, the people in this room, the news, this isn't going away, and we're going to pay attention and see what's going on. Not to mention, we do have a law committee. The law committee will be the first body that sees all this evidence to be the recommending body, and not to mention that the Corps of this council is coming back. So, for the clerk's sake, for law's sake, I think to keep it being placed on file is the correct procedure for this particular issue.
So, we have a second, and I would just add too, that in, on June 7 or 8, the new body will be sworn in, and new committees will be put in place by the council president elected. And the liquor committee, I'm sure, will be having this as a recurring item and be staying up to date on it as to when it's brought back. My sense is, we're going to learn about what happens in the prosecution and Papillion sooner, and this prosecution to come in Omaha, at least involving Mr. McMahon, maybe others, sooner, and that the committee will know sooner, and that this won't fade, you know, from people's minds. So, we have a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Brennan.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order. And I'll just note that item 39 was removed from the agenda, and no action is needed.
The public hearings on agenda items 33, excuse me, on item 33 were held on May 4. Roll call. Oh, we have a light. Councilmember Harding.
I think we have some people here who are here to speak about item 70, and I just...
That's next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that's where we were. Sorry.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Brennan.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 34 through 38 and 40 through 70 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate your name, address, agenda number, and identify yourself as either a proponent or opponent. And item 42 is withdrawn. I thought, I thought you said 40 or 39. Okay. All right. 40 is formally removed as well.
Forty.
Yes, did I say 40 or 42? Let the record reflect, it's 42. Mr. Bradley, welcome.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Is this item 70 I can speak on?
Yes, you may. Name and address and your testimony.
Larry Bradley, L-A-R-R-Y-B-R-A-D-E-B-A-A-R-D-L-E-Y, and 6068 Country Club Oaks Place, Omaha, Nebraska, 68152. I'm a director for the Papio Missouri NRD. However, I'm not speaking for the full board, and I see item 70, the resolution there. Just to make a few comments, Omaha is the next Kansas City. And I say that because Omaha is getting larger. The metropolitan area is growing. And when you look at this resolution, you know, by the way, when you look at a map of the city of Omaha in 1950, you would see its own, you know, a size. Then you fast forward to 1980, or say, 2000, and then by 2021, how large the city has grown. And I've been to previous meetings on this particular item, and I've seen where people would say, well, back in 1950 or 1960, you know, they were around for a certain flood, and their area didn't get flooded out. But, you know, I say that I have a PhD in geography, not saying I'm a smarty pants, but you have to try to calculate and look at how, what the city will look like in 2025, 2030, 2040. And what you get is, as you increase the amount of impervious cover, rooftop, cement, parking lots, streets, you increase the ratio of overbank flows in the urban area. This is scientific fact. You cannot get away from this. This happens in anywhere on the planet of, you know, planet Earth, anywhere in the universe. Mention, you know, and I wasn't around then, but certainly West Dodge Road was a gravel road, and the Boys Town was a farm way, you know, on the outskirts. And now, we see all the rooftop, pavement, parking lot, impervious cover. And so, the potential for overbank flows in the Omaha metropolitan area greatly increased. And again, this is scientific fact. You cannot get away from this. So, I would urge this city council to vote to approve item 70 and make, you know, make note of that, and try to imagine, again, how the city of Omaha may look in 2030, 2040, 2050. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on the consent agenda resolutions or opponents?
It's almost good evening, but good afternoon, City Council. I have stood before this council before and worked with Councilperson Amy Melton on the gun range. When I came here before, it was also the fact that our dam, Sean Malott's 10404 North 132nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. This resolution deals with a study. I'd like to put the map of the area that I'm referring to. I've come before the council to oppose, ask the council to oppose, Resolution 50538. And specifically, I would like the opposition on Dam Site 10, which is in Douglas County, although it's outside of the city limits, it's just north of Highway 36, which is, runs, if I'm looking at it this right. Highway 36 is just south of this, this proposed dam, and it's west of Highway 133, the High Road to Blair. The dam will span over two miles, going up into Washington County. It will displace nine homeowners and will affect 40 properties, including our dairy farm that's been in our family for over 100 years. We believe there are no landowners on this project that support this project and who are willing sellers. Thus, it will force several condemnation proceedings, include our own. Of the properties that are going to be taken by this dam, whether it's dry or wet, half of the land on this project is our family farm. We are fighting for ourselves as well as the other landowners within this region. A little bit of background for those new to this concept, we have our family, and the farm, landowners behind us have been defending our property rights against condemnation in this nature since 1968, when the Corps first threatened to construct dams in the Omaha area. A 1985-86 lawsuit proved that Dam Site 10 specifically was infeasible and stopped the project because its costs of this dam far exceeded the benefits. And because of that, and the injunction that we had against the Corps of Engineers caused the Corps to do the channelization of the Big Papio Creek, the, a lot of levees in the area, and a lot of other structures that have minimized flooding in Omaha. During the two big storms that occurred in 19, and the most recent one on the Elkhorn River, this area did not flood. We are talking northwest Omaha, not west Omaha. We are just, like I said, north of town. We fast forward to the, this day with the Corps of Engineers $3 million study on flood risk. This is purely, in our opinion, an attempt for the Papio NRT to obtain $80 million of federal funding. In order for the federal government to put money into these projects, the, it has to prove a cost-benefit ratio on Dam Site 10 and another dam, which is the one down by Gretna, which is 19. Neither one of these dams are in the Omaha jurisdiction. The total cost to taxpayers to building this dam is projected to be over $127 million. The process during this study, not only has the public process been flawed, we believe there's a significant amount of underlying data within the report that has been crafted in order to achieve a predetermined result, which is to build developer lakes under the guise of flood control. They've occurred before in this area. I can give a specific example, that Dam Site 6, which is just north of Bennington on 36, which is a private lake, it's called Newport Landing. The public cannot vote on that lake. They cannot go around that lake, and there's a minimum area where the public is allowed access to that lake. And that lake was funded by taxpayer dollars with the NRD building that project. The flawed process that I'm referred to is landowners were never notified about this study. The other piece was, at their January 2021 meeting, where the Corps of Engineers presented the study, it was a webcast public meeting. The public was not allowed to speak. We were only allowed to type in questions on a chat box, and there was no feedback back and forth to allow us as the public to ask questions and find out some of the answers that we've been asking. Regarding the underlying data, the need for this dam and the potential flooding is based on a 70-square-mile storm event with 37.2 inches of rainfall over a 72-hour period that is in, within this report. So, ask yourself, does this seem excessive or perhaps an overreach in order to obtain a predetermined result? In addition, inside of this report, there are several proposed NRD dams that are on their priority list that were deemed nonfeasible because their costs exceeded the benefits of building them. Now, keep in mind, these are the priority dams by the NRD today and that are supported by the Papillion Creek Watershed Partnership, which was also mentioned in your resolution. These four dams are projected to cost over $100 million. These are taxpayer dollars that are building them. And also, I would like this board to be aware that both the Douglas County Board and the Washington County Board have passed resolutions opposing the building of Dam Site 10 as a primary flood control method. I have copies of the resolutions, if you want them, for your information. As, you know, another comment I'd like to make, I'm the president of the Papio Valley Preservation Association. We've been in existence since the 70s and have keyed in on protecting the natural resources of the Papio Creek. And part of that, we have been instrumental since 2004 in trying to craft flood control measures within Douglas County that do not utilize dams. We have, they're called low-impact development, and they working in other cities. Other cities are taking dams out, they're not building dams. We just truly feel that this resolution is just an attempt to build additional developer lakes, and it is not an attempt to control flooding. This dam is 15 miles northwest of Nebraska Furniture Mart. And it just defies logic that a dam built that far away, that comprises, if you look at this area, that is farm ground. And if these, you need to hear that these people on this structure have built terraces. We've put in over 16 miles of terraces to control flooding. Our family built a catch basin because our, for our dairy farm, in order to control runoff. We have been instrumental in trying to minimize any effect of runoff from this area, yet we continually to be pelted with the attempt to build a developer lake. Now, in the final study, the NRD, or the Corps has proposed this as a dry dam. A dry dam will also displace the same amount of people, and the farmland that we are allowed to farm on, we cannot get flood insurance because it's considered in an easement area for water. So, it impacts farmers by doing this, as well as every property owner within there. And I leave with this, that I believe there are four to five property owners that these people have won pioneer awards for their land being in their family for over 100 years. And we value our land. It does not have a price tag. So, you know, we're in it for the, we're in it for the long haul. We are not going to go away by a checkbook, but let me tell this board or this council, we have been trying tirelessly to find alternatives to this dam, and that's where we want to go. You know, approve the study, don't approve the building of Dam Site 10. With that, I'd just ask this board to oppose resolution, or at least, you know, take time to understand it more so than anything. And I am here to say, ask me any questions you want. I've been engaged in this. I've worked with Mr. Kelly down in Lincoln on bills, and we're engaged. We have a 500-member organization, and we're going to, we're here to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on consent agenda resolutions? Public hearing is closed. Are you going to testify, sir? Come on down. Is anyone else wishing to testify after this? Gentlemen, raise your hand. Okay, why don't you get in line so we can keep this moving.
I'm Larry Cotton. I live at 13645 North 126th Street. I wish Sean would have left that map up here.
Please address your remarks to the council, sir.
Okay. Is that the way it goes? Yeah, I guess like that. Anyway, I've lived there for 31 years next month, and all the time I've lived there, Thomas Creek is the creek, the main creek there, has never flooded in my 31 years I've been there. In fact, when I first moved there, I accidentally fell in that creek one time, and the water came up to about my waist at that time, and now I could easily wade across it. It's hardly ever over a foot deep in there, day after day. Sean, I think, didn't mention that this area, as far as the Papio Water...
Sir, sir, stand back. If you have things you wish to counsel to consider, please approach the clerk. Hand it to the clerk.
As far as the, this part of the Papio watershed, it only makes up 2% I think of the whole area. And it's never been a priority on the NRD's list in all the years that I've seen documentations on it. At the review meeting we had in January with the Corps of Engineers, one question I asked was, let's see, this is Pawnee Road, I think, right here. It's the low, it's about the lowest place in this little valley. I said, well, they said none of these roads would be impacted. And I said, well, in a flood, wouldn't Pawnee Road be underwater? It's the lowest point of the whole thing. And they said, no. Then how can you take nine properties that set, some of them set 100 feet higher... Then how can you take nine properties that set, some of them set 100 feet higher than Pawnee Road at that juncture? So I can't understand why they need to take people's property to begin with, especially for a dry dam. And they point to the Exarban area, the flood plain changing in the Exarban area. And I can't believe that this little area up in north Douglas County is responsible for changing the flood plain at Exarban, to tell you the truth. I guess, and Sean already mentioned that the county boards had voted to oppose this dam, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
My name's Craig Abel. I live at 12323 Pawnee Road. I'm one of the affected landowners here. I have two parcels of land, including my house, that would be gone if this dam were to go through. I took the afternoon off of work because I wanted to come down here and voice my concerns with this study. One piece of information that you won't find in the Corps of Engineers study is that both the Corps of Engineers and the NRD, the purpose of those two bodies is public safety. The Corps of Engineers has reviewed data that the NRD has provided over the last 50 years. They're looking at the exact same study for the data. The NRD does not have Dam Site 10 on their priority list. It hasn't been there since I've, I've never seen Dam Site 10 on their priority list. From a public safety standpoint, how can there be two opposite sides of this study versus the Corps of Engineers says this dam site is necessary for public safety and the NRD, it's not even on their radar? That's concerning to me as a homeowner that's going to be ousted by Dam Site 10 as well as a taxpayer. You know, why such polar opposites is kind of concerning me. And like Sean pointed out, this Dam Site 10, whether it's a wet dam or dry dam, it only has about two miles that flow into Dam Site 10. Dam Site 10 is 15 miles away from Nebraska Furniture Mart. That's 15 miles of rainfall that will not be, one drop of that rainfall south of Dam Site 10 will not be in that dam. Only two miles on Thomas Creek flow into Dam Site 10. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of that, that the impact is very minimal for flood control. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to testify who has not yet testified on the consent agenda resolutions? Last call.
Harry Junker, 12404 Pawnee Road. It's been said eloquent. I don't need to add a whole lot. I took a lot of things out that I was going to say because it's been said. But the Army took up this thing by the request of the NRD. And previously, it's been, they weren't interested. They decided that it didn't have the cost benefit ratio, which it didn't. It was proven. And all of a sudden, they decided to go back to the Army Corps and ask for their help. Why? Because they get 63 or 64% of that money that they want paid by the federal government. So at some point, it seems like it's a mouth. I guess you get influenced by having a lot of money. The study's flawed. I think it's been proven. The area that they said, as Sean mentioned, was a whole lot smaller than what they had in their study. They have had a real reason to do it, and I guess it's money. I don't know what else it would be. I guess when it's all said and done, if you torture the data long enough, you can get it to confess to anything. And it seems that this particular time, now that they're trying this, Dam Site 10, they've extended it to make the data work. It never used to be in Washington County, so they made it bigger. The facts are that if the rain falls above this dam, it has a very, very small chance of doing the damage that they were talking about. I think one of the things that hasn't been addressed is the human cost. You know, I put it to you guys, would you like your place underwater? We've been, our, one of our barns is over 100 years old. There are beams in it from the World Exposition of 1898. We intend to stay there. We do not want money. We want to stay there, want to give it to our kids. And this is just not necessary. I appeal to you to reject this and not endorse this study. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Anyone else? All right, you're the last person.
I think there's one more after me, I believe, that wants to speak.
Come on down.
Yeah. So my name is Wade Junker. I reside in Washington County, outside of this area, at 13228 County Road 40. And I lived in Omaha for 13 years, so I appreciate everything the city does and the council. It's not an easy thing. That has to happen each year. Today, I'm going to lighten it up a little bit. I have been listening to Greta Thunberg from Sweden, environmentalist activist, some quotes from her, and they're not directed at you, more so the Natural Resource District, the Papillion Missouri Natural Resource District, our Papio NRD, as we call them. You are failing us, but the young people are starting to take notice of your betrayal. You lied to us. I really do feel they lied to the public. They spin this. They have a lobbyist down in Lincoln that we're confronted with all the time. There's laws that are passed without anyone knowing about it. They tack them onto other bills. We go to all these board meetings. I've been doing this for 18 years now. You know, and I feel if you don't know the issues at hand or what the motive or the underlying agenda of these partnerships are to pull you in and to cost share or to have you sign off on something before you know what the final plan is that a Corps might come in on and partner with the NRD on to give the federal dollars, you really lose the transparency for the public as to why you would pass a resolution like this. I think it's premature, and earlier today, I saw a lot of due diligence on your parts, you know, not wanting to act on something that needed to play out a little longer first. When this report, the final version came down was in January, and we had about 20 days to read a 200-plus-page report full of hydrology and a lot of lingo that people aren't familiar with. But it's flawed. I mean, there's obviously wording that was lifted from other reports. There's grammar mistakes, different things of those natures. Another quote from her, "The eyes of the future generations are upon you." And I am Harry's son. I'm Wade Junker. Last quote I'll leave you with is, "I shouldn't be up here. I should be back in school on the other side of the ocean." Well, that's not exactly true, but I did have to take the afternoon off to be here. This talk you've heard about Nebraska Furniture Mart, they actually sent their lawyer, legal counsel, to testify in front of the Douglas County Board a couple weeks back, and I took that afternoon off. And their FEMA maps are going to be under review and redrawn. They do this every so often. So this determines where the flood plain actually sits and what areas are affected within or outside of those map lines. And so their whole point was, is if you don't do this, then Nebraska Furniture Mart Headquarters is going to be forced to relocate. Well, let me tell you, this last year, most of those employees were IT people and their headquarters buildings there anyways. They're working remotely anyhow. And when they built the new electronics building there on the grounds of Nebraska Furniture Mart, it's diagonal. If you look at their map from Google Earth or from the City Planning Department, front of that building sits diagonal. And that's to keep it from abutting that flood zone as the FEMA map was drawn, when they got special consideration to build that building that way back whenever they built it. So, you know, maps do change, and if they have to carry additional liability or insurance, why is that these Dam Site 10 residences, their properties, why is it their burden to bear to protect one entity in the middle of Omaha? If the rain doesn't fall upstream of this dam, it does absolutely no good, and it's only 2% of the watershed. So the cost benefit ratio is going to be called into question, and there will be an uphill condemnation battle because there's not willing sellers in this area. So that's what I wanted to come to say. If you have any questions, feel free. Thank you.
Louise, be ready or you won't get to talk.
I'm up here.
No, you're not. Come in line. Please proceed.
Hello, Omaha City Council. My name is Grant Malots, 14024 Blair High Road, Omaha, Nebraska 68142. I want to thank you for your time today to discuss the resolution regarding the Corps and the NRD Papillion Creek Watershed Study. This study is being pushed through with underlying data using over-exaggerations that are very easy to be seen by anyone who reads the nearly 2,000-page report. As an accountant, I do what I call smell tests through the client's numbers. For example, if a construction client with gross revenues of $250,000 and $50,000 in automobile expenses, I say that smells funny. When I go to look through the details of what makes up the automobile expense, $40,000 of it was for a new vehicle, which should be capitalized as an asset. If that $45,000 is removed, then the financials are misleading. Therefore, I applied the same smell logic test to this report and came to the same conclusion on the damages. It smells funny. For example, I am puzzled as to why would $39 million worth of cars be destroyed if it were to flood? Common sense tells me that people would drive their cars out of a flood area, which would lead to minimal car damage. Or another example is on Dam Site 10. Why through all the numerous studies over the past 50 years, has Dam Site 10 been determined to be the least feasible dams of all the dams? And now all of a sudden, it's the most feasible, especially when every other dam in the Corps study couldn't even pass on a one-to-one ratio? They had to add recreation in the one just to get it over one-to-one. That just smells funny to me. And I'm just a farm kid with a master's degree in accounting and agricultural and biological systems engineering, and I can smell the issues within this study. I could go on and on with numerous examples of funny smelling items within this report, but I don't want to take up all your time today as I know you have numerous other items to tackle that may be more important. However, I do want to thank you for allowing us to speak on this proposal, and it is the most important item to me right now. I ask that you consider reading this report before you vote, as you would be supporting a report that can't even get the page numbers correct on the table of contents. Thank you for your time today.
Last testifier.
Luis Jimenez, 3306 Burt Street. I'm a proponent for Item 54, which is a temporary designation to close off this roadway for the Cinco de Mayo parade for June 12th. And then also Resolution 55 for the amended agreement for, between the City of Omaha and the Women's Center for Advancement. And then also the Item 66, which is a resolution in the total amount of $58,000 for Big Muddy Workshop Incorporated to provide professional landscape architectural services to develop the Recreation Master Plan for Adams Park. And then also 67, resolution that is recommended by the mayor, approval of a trail agreement between the city and the state of Nebraska, Lake Street and Sprague Street, in which the state grants permission for the city to construct a trail in part on state right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton Palermo. Brennan Festerson. Gray Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. We need a motion and second to withdraw, 42.
We need a motion, a second to withdraw, Item 42. Second, roll call.
Melton Palermo. Brennan Festerson. Gray Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. One public hearing can be held for Items 71 and 72, ordinance is to transfer permanent easements and land to MUD for property located east of 132nd Street between Renfro Circle and Discovery Drive.
Public hearing on Items 71 and 72 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 73, an ordinance to approve the purchase of the Aero EZIO system from Teleflex for use by the Omaha Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Division in the amount of $29,000 per year.
Public hearing on Item 73 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 74, an ordinance to amend Chapter 43 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Building to amend code sections to conform with previous code changes.
The public hearing on Item 74 begins at this time. We'll hear from Ms. Best Boy Osney from Planning.
Good afternoon, Ms. Best Boy Osney, Omaha City Planning, 1819 Farnham. President Jerram, council members. The code amendments that are on the agenda for you today are for the commercial side of the building codes, which include the International Building Code, the International Existing Building Code, and the International Energy Conservation Code. All of these, we are proposing to update to the 2018 additions. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents on Item 74?
Richard Netley, 16408 Pasadena Circle. I'm a member of the Omaha Building Code Review Committee. I'm a retired professional engineer. I have over 40 years of experience in the area of structural engineering. I'm here today as a proponent for the adoption of the 2018 International Building Code and the proposed amendments. And I'm available for any questions in the area specifically in structural engineering.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents to Item 74? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for Items 75 and 76. Ordinance is approving Douglas Shared Scooter operation agreements with spin and lime.
The public hearing on Items 75 and 76 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Councilmembers Hannah, Deputy Public Works Department, here to just lay out a couple of pieces of information about these agreements today. We've got two agreements before you, one for spin and one for lime, with an initial term expiring on June 1st, 2022. An option for this agreement to extend up to four additional one-year terms with a total of five years being considered. The fleet size that we've allotted for these agreements is 1,000 scooters per vendor. With the emphasis in our fee structure on active fleet management, this will encourage the vendors to ensure that we don't have scooters sitting out that are not being used. A continued focus from the Parking and Mobility Division will be on equity and access and deployments of scooters in areas that are underserved. Also, a promotion of micro-mobility as a transit option for those in our community and added infrastructure with safety considerations being the prime goal of that, orderly writing and parking of those scooters. Spin and Lime both offer their newest generation of scooter within these agreements, focus on virtual required education and the possibility of in-person education events if the conditions allow in the local community, and an extensive preventative maintenance and cleaning procedure. I'm here for any questions if you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents on Items 75 and 76?
Hello again, Sarah Johnson. This time, I am speaking on behalf of the Mode Shift Omaha Board, and that address is 6400 University Drive South, located in the CEC Building on UNOS Campus. So I'm speaking specifically in support today of Item 75. First of all, we just wanted to thank you all. The concept and conversation around transportation mobility came up a lot during this last election cycle, and we're excited to work with you to make some of those statements reality. So Mode Shift strongly supports Spin's application to operate under the upcoming Electric Shared Scooter Program. In our discussions about how we might work better, might work together if they are selected to operate in Omaha, Spin has demonstrated a strong commitment to safety, equity, and economic development. We believe their partnership approach to designing and deploying micro-mobility programs will serve our community well. We also support their proposal of using the Spin hubs to gather and charge the scooters. This will result in less sidewalk clutter that can become an obstacle for folks walking or using mobility devices. We also encourage the thoughtful placement of these hubs. We should not remove vital public space from people, and hubs should only be installed on sidewalks with ample room for both pedestrians and scooters. If there's not enough sidewalk space- If there's not enough sidewalk space, we recommend flexibility with car parking spaces by utilizing curb-adjacent street spaces for Spin hubs, and perhaps additional bike parking as well. We believe it's time to revisit the conversation about on-street parking for more than just cars. Bike parking, bike share, and scooter hubs should be considered as viable options moving forward, not banned as they currently are. Along those lines, we appreciate Spin's dedication not just to scooters, but to livable spaces, and want to make note of some of their suggestions when it comes to placemaking. Quote, "Spin hubs are most effective when paired with features that enhance a city's livability. These include place-making elements like seating, lighting, interactive design, parklets, sheltered waiting areas, local art, and pop-up protected lanes." Over the past year, we've seen, end quote, "Over the past year, we have seen cities across the globe change the ways they view their streets from strictly moving cars to places for people. This pilot is a perfect opportunity to take meaningful action. We should now reconfigure portions of our street network to create places where people want to be, where people can move about, dine outdoors, and shop, feeling safe from both the pandemic and that they won't be hit by people in cars." Finally, we've learned a lot from the previous two scooter pilot projects. We learned that people on scooters do not feel safe in the street, and as a natural consequence, choose to ride on sidewalks. We also know that people on scooters make pedestrians feel uncomfortable when sharing the sidewalk. People will always make rational decisions to stay safe, even if it technically breaks the law. So reactionary fines won't address the issue of sidewalk riders. Design should be prioritized over enforcement in most cases, and this is certainly one of them. Providing safe places for people to ride scooters and bicycles is a proactive solution and aligns with Omaha's commitment to complete streets and Vision Zero by accommodating all road users and prioritizing safety over speed. Since there are few ideal places for a person traveling in that 10 to 15 mile an hour zone, which is the same speed as a person on a bicycle, we recommend expanding the network of micro-mobility lanes. These spaces are crucial during the scooter pilot and the biking boom, and using the data collected, Omaha can make permanent improvements to its multimodal network. We have a lot of work to do when it comes to updating our transportation system, and this is a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. My name is Fong Doi. We're located at 802 Pierce Street. I'm here to represent Spin. We are a personal mobility company and a wholly-owned subsidiary of Ford Motor Company. Firstly, we'd like to thank the Parking and Mobility Division for developing a sustainable and innovative program during the last two years. We really support the city's vision to further first-and-last-mile trips. And during the last two years, we've been in regular communication with staff to ensure that we are continuously developing our technology, our outreach strategy, as well as our operation model, to meet the needs of local Omaha residents and visitors. And we're humbled to be selected for a third year in a row, and we look forward to partnering with you all on shared goals around safety, innovation, equity, infrastructure, multimodality, and equity. We will continue to employ a workforce of all 100% in-house W-2 employees, and we are committed to developing technology to maximize safety and ensure compliance. Last year, we also installed our first Spin hub at Creighton University. We've been working diligently with the Department of Public Works, planning and law to deploy more Spin hubs in Omaha. And Spin hubs are multipurpose parking and charging stations equipped with a screen. Some of the benefits of these hubs are that they improve parking compliance, reduce clutter, reduce operational vehicle miles traveled by our operations team. They also provide reliably-charged vehicles, and they advance the city's public information objectives as well by providing live, multimodal wayfinding information, educational and community events, as well as other customizable civic information. They also generate meaningful revenue for the city to reinvest in other sustainability or mobility initiatives. We will dedicate 20% of the screen time for civic information and share 40% of the net revenue from advertising with the city. And we anticipate generating about $30,000 to $90,000 per year over the next five years as the program matures. That would total around $300,000 over five years. This comprehensive strategy to invest in smart infrastructure by Spin represent about an $825,000 smart infrastructure investment. And we believe that this connected network of Spin hubs in the public right-of-way, on private real estate, as well as on university campuses, is a way to advance the city's smart city initiative. We've identified numerous locations across Omaha, and will continue working closely with staff to review data to conduct due diligence before installation, as well as review data to make sure that these are being effectively utilized once they've been installed. So again, we're really grateful for the opportunity to bring shared electric scooters back and for the opportunity to invest in smart infrastructure. I'm joined by my colleague Vince, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? You must be Vince.
I am. Good afternoon. My name is Vince Arcalas. I'm the local operations manager here in Omaha for Spin. We are located at 802 Pierce Street here in Omaha. I've been leading Spin's local operations since 2019. I'm a longtime Nebraska resident and have raised my family here. Consider the Omaha metro to be my home. I'm personally committed to making sure Spin operations serve our community's needs and that we are committed to improving access to employment without making employees settle for independent contractor status. All of our employees are W-2, and they work directly for Spin with competitive wages, benefits, and advancement opportunities. Last year, we were one of the only operators who partnered with the Downtown Improvement Association to deploy educational aim frame boards to remind users of local riding rules, like not riding on the sidewalk. We targeted deployment near multifamily housing to provide mobility options for residents and reduce the burden of owning cars and try to help to reduce the burden of owning cars and parking. We frequently deploy our scooters, or try to, on bus routes 11, 4, 24, and 15 to try to further expand transit connection into the urban core area. We adapted our outreach strategy to promote discounted rates in both English and Spanish via promotional hang tags on scooters deployed in the north areas of Omaha, as well as in south Omaha. We were the only operator last year who consistently deployed in both northern and southern neighborhoods, including Florence, Vinson, and south Omaha's 24th Street District. We also provided free trips to get folks to the polls in November, and we also improved our response time by 50% by implementing a local text line that provides direct communication with our warehouse team. With the opportunity to return to Omaha for a third year in a row, my team of experienced specialists will continue to scale responsibly and work collaboratively with the city and local organizations like Heartland B-Cycle, the Greater Chamber, Mode Shift Omaha, the Downtown Improvement Association, Green Omaha Coalition, the Heartland Workforce Solutions, and the Nebraska Urban League. And as Fong said, I really appreciate and thank you guys for the opportunity to bring back shared electric scooters to serve our residents and visitors in the Omaha area. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? We have a proponent registered by Zune, is Benny Foltz. And Learon Foley from Lime.
Hi, good afternoon, council. Thank you very much, Council President, for recognizing me. On behalf of Lime, I am very appreciative of the opportunity for Lime to return to the city of Omaha for a second year after having started in 2019 during the city's first pilot operation.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we usually have you introduce yourself with your name and address.
Absolutely. My name is Lee Foley. I'm the Director of Community and Government Relations for Lime, and our address is 8934 J Street in Omaha.
Please continue.
All right. On behalf of Lime, as I mentioned, I am very appreciative of the opportunity, and I thank the city council and the city staff for continuing the program of micro-mobility and for inviting Lime back for a second year to be able to demonstrate our commitment to equity in providing safe, open air, and affordable mobility options for people across the city of Omaha. Lime's proposal was centered on equity, providing automatic 50% discounts for any trips that began in north Omaha, commencing outreach in south Omaha, and making sure that we're building strong partnerships in downtown and midtown to make sure that parking is neat and that it is tidy. We prioritize safety as one of our number-one concerns along with equity. We will commit to working with the city continually over the course of this program to make sure that scooters are a meaningful mode of operation in the city of Omaha, and we thank you once again for allowing us to operate.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. So I've always supported our scooter program as an alternative form of transit, and frankly, something fun to do in our community that could use fun things to do around our events in particular, as well as day-to-day travel. And should this be approved next week, it'd be in time for the College World Series, which is the preponderance of the usage of scooters in our community every year. Maybe a question for our city representative. I don't think we're seeing a lot new here that we haven't already seen, other than some enhancements to the program, and I think a tighter operational structure than we've had before. One notable change, though, is that although they still aren't allowed on sidewalks, they would be allowed on public trails, right?
Hannah Deppino, Public Works. That is correct. We worked with the Parks Department in the off-season this year to kind of help to define some rules, and the rules and regulations that are advised on the trails, the trail etiquette is going to be highly enforced. We will make sure that we're keeping an eye and making sure that people are using scooters appropriately so that we don't abuse the privilege of being able to be out there on the trails. But that will be a new addition this year.
From my perspective, that's a positive. And then, secondly, a question about the expansion of the hubs, which I also think is positive. I understand, you know, the revenue model associated with this program and going forward, presumably, or possibly for the next five years, is that it does generate more, it could generate more revenue than we've seen in the past from this program, and therefore be able to help fund itself to expand, like we'd like to see it expand, particularly into areas like north and south Omaha. And I understand that a key component of doing that is this notion of advertising at the hubs on what would be kind of a small screen substation situation. Can you describe the status of that, and would that require a separate approval through the city council or administratively, or?
Yes, sir. It would. It would require likely a code change and a policy to be written by the Public Works Department. Our division has already written a policy, and we are in conversations with the Law Department and the Planning Department about the use of that policy going forward. These would be individual leases for each Spin hub that would be placed, and we would evaluate them on a case-by-case basis before they would be placed. And so we do want to have that oversight and make sure that we're placing them in the right places. And that they certainly would bring an added revenue benefit to this program that would be put back into micro-mobility infrastructure.
Okay. So that's in motion, and would come back to the city council at some point?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Hannah, I'm sorry, don't go too far. Thanks, Mr. President. And actually, so one of the issues that Mr. Festerson just brought up, that we had some earlier conversations about on the Parks Committee, is that we're allowing electric scooters on the public trails when we haven't even had the park rules amendments come back to us yet. I know that that was told to us today that it would be on the Parks Committee agenda, but I find it a little interesting that we have that written into the agreement when we haven't even seen, when the Parks Committee hasn't even considered those yet, and the council hasn't even approved those yet. So that may be something that we have to amend, at least maybe consider next week to amend that those aren't effective until they're passed by the city council.
As far as the rules are concerned?
As far as allowing them on the trails, because if, for whatever reason, they're not approved by the city council, the new trails, the new park rules that might have that in there, or might not have that in there, I think would be premature for us to include that in the agreement with Spin and Lime, if in fact that hasn't been approved by the council.
Certainly, there are park rules there today that the scooter companies would follow. We also have the maximum speed of 15 miles per hour for any scooter, and I think the rule that they're contemplating for the parks is to have some sort of speed limit on the trails to ensure that people are safe as far as pedestrians and bicyclists and scooter riders. I'm not the expert on that. That would be Director Matt Kalsovich.
Sure.
But I think we could entertain whatever you feel is best until those rules are in place.
Like I said, I think we might have to at least make that contingent upon, or some like language. But, and thank you for clarifying on the advertising. I know that that would be a separate action that would require further consideration by the city council.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. My clerk.
Item 77, Fuchinaro Excavating Appeals rejection of their bid from April 7th, 2021 for OPW 54081 sewer maintenance building site grading and surcharge.
Is there anyone here from Fuchinaro? Come on down, please. We'll need your name, your address, and the basis for your appeal. Is there anyone here from, oh, I see the city has someone here, too. So we'll hear from you, and then we'll hear from the city, and then maybe council members who have questions.
Okay. I am David Fuchinaro, president of Fuchinaro Excavating Company. Thank you for letting me speak today. I am the person responsible for submitting the bid for the project, OPW 54081 sewer maintenance building site grading and surcharge on April 7th. Our company was read as the low bid by about $20,000. Our company has successfully completed grading work for dozens of street sewer and building projects for the city of Omaha for over 50 years, almost always as a grading subcontractor, because this particular project was a grading-only project and completely within our company's capabilities. This was one of the very rare occasions when we placed a bid as a general contractor of a project. We're capable of performing 100% of the work with our own forces. We're not as familiar as we should have been with the clerical documents required to have been submitted with the bid. It was my accidental oversight that caused the documents Exhibit B, certificate of compliance, and Exhibit C, Responsible Contractor Compliance Form, to be omitted from the bid submission. These omitted documents roughly state that we will follow all state, local, and federal regulations in the performance of this work on your project. I received notice of our non-compliance with the required submittal of the documents on April 26th. I immediately followed the suggested appeal procedure by emailing the city clerk, the public works director, and the contract administrator to provide those missing documents and to appeal the rejection of our bid. I assure you that we follow all local, state, and federal regulations continuously in the performance of all our business, and we will do so on all future work, including this contract. Therefore, I ask the council to reinstate our bid for the project and to award the work to our company. Thank you for allowing me to present our case, and I am available for any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchinaro. We'll now hear from Heather Tippi Pierce from the city in city legal. I think Mr. Weezin. Heather will present the city's side of the position, and Mr. Weeze will present the legal side.
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works. As Mr. Fuchinaro stated, at the time of bid, there were two documents missing that were listed as required documents. The first that he mentioned, the Exhibit B, is required by specification. If that had been the only thing missing, we probably wouldn't be here today. We have the flexibility to request additional documentation on anything that is required by specification. However, the actual reason why we're here today is the missing RC1 form. This is a form that is required by the Omaha Municipal Code, and the code gives us very little flexibility. It very strictly says that the form must be It very strictly says that the form must be completed and submitted with the bid, or the bid is considered non-responsive, and that was the basis of the city's rejection of this document. In keeping with precedent and in keeping with the Omaha Municipal Code, therefore, the department recommends that this appeal be denied, and we move forward with the next compliant bidder.
And when we move to electronic bidding system, a mistake like this would be prevented because the system we intend to have will not allow you to hit submit and upload it unless and until you have hit all the required information, right?
It is our intention in the setup of such a system, and we are working with the Douglas County Purchasing Office as our joint purchasing agent to get such a system set up, and that this, along with a few other code-required forms, would be absolutely kind of the stop. If they're not uploaded, then they, same with bid security, for example, if the required bid security documentation was not uploaded, the bid itself would not be allowed to be submitted. So it would ideally catch mistakes like this.
Thank you. Mr. Wiesen, let's hear from the Law Department on your recommendation and the reason why.
Brian Wiesen, Assistant City Attorney. Omaha Municipal Code, Section 10-108, details the Responsible Contractor Form that is required. In relevant part, it states that all bidders seeking to contract with the city must complete a Responsible Contract Form and submit it with bid documents at the time of the bid opening. It does not allow the RC1 form to be submitted at a later date. Further, it says, "Failure to submit the Responsible Contractor Form at the time of the bid opening will result in the bid being rejected." Based upon the section of the Omaha Municipal Code, it would be our recommendation that the appeal be denied.
And if the compliant bidders who submitted the form with their bid, even though more expensive, were to be denied in the event that the Public Works made that recommendation to proceed with the next lowest bidder rather than rejecting all the bids, then if we didn't, they would have some basis to come back against the city, wouldn't they?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So Vice President Palermo, thank you. We'll close the public hearing. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we've heard this numerous times, and I won't say it's anybody in the chamber here because we know how important this is, but there are others who are not listening, and we're going to get a lot more serious on this because, David, sir, we know your company is very capable. This is something you could do with a blindfold, I'm sure, but you're a small business, and you're a small business in my district, so this is affecting my constituents where they work. So for those listening who aren't taking action on this, you've been warned. We're going to start taking this very serious. There's no, we're humans, we make mistakes, but electronic bidding will take that human air out, and the city will save money. So whoever's listening out there who's dragging their feet, you've been warned, we're going to change this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? Roca.
Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Non-action items, items 78 through 95, do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:53.